Good afternoon, welcome to the December 16th meeting of the Phoenix City Council and the Central Park Central Community Facilities District Board, which will convene prior to the city council meeting. I will call to order the Central Park Community Facilities District Board meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board member Conlin?
Here.
Board member DeCecio? Board member Garcia?
Here.
Board member Gervais?
Here.
Board member Nowakowski?
Here.
Board member Pastor? Board member Stark?
Here.
Board member Waring?
Here.
Board member Williams?
Here.
Vice Chair Guardado?
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego?
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Directors held on September 2nd, 2020?
So moved, this is Andy Conlin.
Second.
We have a second from board member Williams. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Board member Conlin, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Conlin? DeCecio? Garcia?
Yes.
Gervais?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Passes nine zero.
That is our agendized business, so we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you to our board members for joining us. I will now call to order the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council for December 16th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio? Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring? Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here.
Mario Barajas? Welcome, Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please reflect?
Yes, Mayor.
Mario Barajas is here with us to provide interpretation for our residents who speak Spanish. Mario, would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you said, my name is Mario Barajas, I'm going to be serving as today's Spanish interpreter. I will be introducing myself now to the Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Barajas, voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete del español el día de hoy. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G6778 through 6781, S47159 through 47206, and resolutions 21885 through 21887.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion regarding the formal meeting minutes from November 20th, 2019?
Yes, I have a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signal aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations?
Yes, motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on the liquor license portion of our agenda?
Yes, motion to approve items three through 16.
Second.
Thank you. Any council member questions or comments? We do have applicants for many of them available to speak if necessary, all in support. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
I'm a yes, but I want to explain my vote. Moscow's Taco Shop, I'm happy that you're getting a liquor license. I enjoy your restaurant, your shop, thank you.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? I apologize, Councilman, I did not hear you. Waring?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, now I can, thank you.
There you go.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
I'm going to explain my vote, Mayor. I'm going to be voting yes, and I agree with Councilwoman Pastor. Their tacos are amazing, and their nachos and their salsa are so good, yes, absolutely.
Gallego?
Yes, and I join my council colleagues in being very excited about some of today's applicants. I also am a Pedal House fan as well, I mean, we have some good ones coming, so we're so excited that so many restaurants are investing in the city of Phoenix and wish you luck as your business moves forward. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we do. Motion to approve items 17 through 92, except the following: items 21, 23, 27, 28, 31, 34, 35, 36, 45, 47, 48, 49, 52, 55, 56, 67, and 92. Items 37 and 38 are as revised. Item 60 is requested to be continued to January 20th, 2021, and item 91 is requested to be continued to February 3rd, 2021, and excluding these items for public comment, 37 and 44.
I will second.
Thank you, nice job, Vice Mayor. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm okay with the majority of the motion. I think the concern I have is with item 91. I think it's something that we should be voting on and doing what the hearing officer suggested. This item is in regards to abandoning public right-of-ways to businesses, and as stated to the hearing officer, the purpose of abandoning this is to further criminalize folks that are around the Human Services campuses, campus, and other organizations. We got the news today that there was actually a baby born around the zone, around the area, in one of the tents today. We passed the plan, a comprehensive plan, to address the issue, and in that plan that was unanimously voted on, we all agreed that we shouldn't be criminalizing folks, and I believe item 91 is sole purpose is to criminalize. We have presented both the neighbors and the folks without shelter, and a position that is not legally viable, as was explained to us by our legal team, and so I hope that when we address this in February, we will all be voting along with the hearing officer and denying this. With that, I vote yes on the motion.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
I'm a yes, but item 23 was part of the omnibus, I don't know if that item was pulled.
It was.
Okay, thank you. I just said so I'm a yes, I just want to make sure.
Thank you. Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams? I apologize, Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Passes nine zero.
We, incredible things in the omnibus today, including investing in helping people fight the economic impacts of COVID-19, investing in our water system, so some very cool things moving forward today. We next move to item 21, which is the annual dues to the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials.
Motion to approve item 21?
Thank you, an exciting one, as we work to invest in affordable housing in our community. Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams? Thank you, Councilman Nowakowski. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven to two.
We next move to item 23, which is work with Rio Solado Community College for Police Academy testing services, noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating in this. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 23?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Passes eight zero.
We move to item 27, which is a proposed Central Avenue and Domax Road annexation public hearing. We will not be taking a vote today, just a public hearing. I will open the public hearing now. We do not have any public wishing to comment on this item, so I will close the public hearing, and we will see that at a future council meeting. We next move to item number 28, which is an annex hearing just up the road at 11th Avenue. I will open that public hearing. We again have no members of the public to comment, so I will close the public hearing. And again, we will not take any council action today. We next move to item 31, which is property acquisition for the South Central and Northwest Extension Light Rail projects. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 31?
Thank you. Any council member comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven two.
We next move forward to item 34, which is using an Arizona State Cooperative Contract to support our census and CED. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 34?
Motion and a second, and again, thank you to everyone on our Complete Count Committee, including our council leadership, for all their hard work to have an accurate census during an unprecedented time. Any council member comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? I apologize, Councilman.
Yes.
Thank you. Williams?
Yes, and a big thank you to all the staff that worked so hard on this.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, for your hard work on it. We move to item 35, Amendment of Prior Water System Bond Ordinance to Allow for Issuance of Taxable Obligations. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 35?
Thank you, and this comes on an exciting day for our city. Our Chief Financial Officer, who is leading this effort, was just recognized as a trailblazer from a national leadership for folks involved in the bond industry. It is an honor for the highest level of professionalism and integrity and for monitoring. We are so grateful for her, as she's led our finance system in America's fastest-growing city, and procurement, improving our retirement systems, issuing the city's first sustainability bonds, which just earned an honorable mention of the Climate Protection Award from the U.S. Conference of Mayors in the last week. So Denise, well-deserved recognition, and thank you for leading on this item and generally for our city. Council member comments on this item?
Mayor, I just want to echo your comments about Denise. We are really blessed to have her. She is what I call a rock star.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Williams?
I will echo Councilwoman Stark. Denise is exceptional and always can find a way to make things happen, so she is deeply appreciated.
Wonderful, thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Waring?
Yes.
Thank you, yes. Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. We next move to item 36, which is public comment on the proposed changes to the memorandum of understanding submitted by authorized employee organizations. I will turn to our city manager to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Item 36 is a public hearing on proposed memorandum of understanding from the city's labor unions. The city's MOUs with our unions expire on June 30th, 2021. As of December 1 of this year, just a few days ago, we have formally begun the negotiation process, which is set out in the city code. Per the city code, unions were provided an opportunity to present their negotiation requests, if they chose, at last week's December 8, 2020 council meeting. The Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, known as PLE, did present last week at that meeting, and I want to thank PLE for diligently following the city code. The city code also sets forth that the public has an opportunity to comment on the proposed MOU at today's meeting. This item is a public hearing, it is not posted for council action, rather, it's an opportunity for the public to speak to the council and to city management about the proposed memorandum of understanding that was published in last week's agenda. The comments will be noted for the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. I will go first to public comments, and then council members will have an opportunity, if they wish to do so, to make comments after we hear from the public, noting that this is, there is no action today, this is for us to receive input. We will begin with Amy Meglio, followed by Camille Johnson.
All right, hello, council members and mayor. My name is Amy Meglio, and I'm a lead volunteer coordinator with the Grassroots Law Project. And in our meetings with different city council members since July of this year, GLP has expressed our extreme concern with the plea contract that has come over out of former MOUs, specifically the clause in that contract that allows Phoenix PD to destroy personnel files. The best answer that we received was, nobody knows how that got through. These negotiations happen behind closed doors. The most concerning answer we got, and this was on a broadcast Zoom meeting, was Vice Mayor Guardado saying she has no problem with the clause, and she refused to reject it. The Vice Mayor refused to reject the clause in the police union contract that allows officers to destroy personnel files, and I've struggled to think of just one non-shady reason that the police union would have written this into their contract. Vice Mayor Guardado had failed to give us one good function for the clause, so this city council purports that they're about constituent safety, each individually, right? Show us that in your budget. Show us that with your votes. Where behind closed doors? Where in the contract language? Where, as the BIPOC death by police toll continues to rise, does it show that each of you care? We deserve better, and we demand transparency. The Phoenix Police Department is the fifth-most murderous police force in the nation to date, killing at massively disproportionately racial numbers. These officers have qualified immunity, they can destroy records, and now they ask for even more time in the investigatory process before having to make statements? Something is incredibly wrong here, and that is why we, the community, are here today demanding no more negotiations behind closed doors, no new language that decreases transparency and accountability, no more control power to PLE, and no new money to already way over funded police department. I yield my time.
Camille will be followed by Mukhtar.
Look, let's stop calling PLE a union and call it what it is, a mafia. A mafia is defined as a type of organized crime syndicate whose primary activities are protection racketeering, arbitrating disputes between criminals, and brokering and enforcing illegal agreements and transactions. If that doesn't describe PLE in a nutshell, I don't know what does. Let's start with brokering and enforcing illegal agreements and transactions. Negotiating the MOU behind closed doors is in direct violation of Arizona's Open Meetings Law, which requires meetings of public bodies be conducted openly, and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings, which contain such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. We need these negotiations to be live-streamed to the public so there is full transparency. As for arbitrating disputes between criminals, is that not how PLE union reps come in like mob lawyers to get their butts off scot-free for murdering people? Finally, protection racketeering is the entire idea behind having an organization like PLE. PLE lines the pockets of city council members and city government officials to ensure that they get more power, more money, and their cop friends never face any accountability. Even when attempts at weak reforms are implemented, like when keratic chokeholds were banned, the president of PLE, Brit London, responded by saying, "If I'm punching a guy and it's not working, do I just continue punching him? Or do I now have to pull my gun and kill him?" This violent statement sounds like something a mob boss would say, not the head of a supposed labor union. Stop allowing mob rule here in Phoenix. Denounce PLE and allow the public to have a say in how police union contracts are negotiated. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mukhtar will be followed by Elizabeth Venable.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I want to thank all the councilmen for giving opportunities to talk about these topics. As a community advocate and employee advocate, I do support unions, but Phoenix Union is different than labor unions. They are more to protect bad police officers for accountability. If we want transparency and accountability, we need to know what the Phoenix Police Union is asking for. Everything should be in public, so the community have ownership of what's going on in their public funding and their public police services. We have seen police union going after councilmen and councilwomen for what they believe the community needs, and they attack the mayor, they attack everyone that wants to hold police officers accountable. We cannot have a police union that acts like a mafia. We want to have a transparency, we want to make sure the union does what union does, which is have a fair process for city, well, police employees to go through. And anyone that I know that likes unions will support unions, but will not support unions that allows police officers to get away with matters. Thank you very much.
Elizabeth will be followed by Vidi Hernandez.
Hello, Elizabeth Venable Fund for Empowerment, and I just wanted to say that no negotiations should take place behind closed doors. I believe that the city of Phoenix needs to engage in transparency and open public meetings. I believe that it is the responsibility of the city to not just arm police and continue giving them raises, continue patting them on the back, but rather to hold them accountable for their behaviors, many of which are illegal and have been either litigated or may be litigated in the future. So what I should say is that you need to open up these negotiations and consider not raising any additional new funds for police. You already took about $75 million from the CARES Act money and put it into the police. I think it's time to give a little bit more into the actual community and not give it to a group of armed thugs who happen to have a logo and carry out crimes, and I guess they could be a mafia, but they also could be a gang. That's about it, I'm going to yield my time, thank you.
Thank you. Vidi will be followed by Walt Gray.
Hi, everyone, this is Vidi with Bullet in Action. In this contract, what we see is a plea, again, attempting to continue to get rewarded for their violence. Several sections throughout this draft are further attempts to reduce transparency and reduce accountability, and yet are asking for more money. This is unacceptable, right? Meanwhile, as we heard earlier today, there was a woman that gave birth to a baby in the zone today, as a shelter expansion plan has continued to get delayed because excuses that there is no more money. Section 1.4, section 1-4, and a lot of the sections in that section from B, and several ones are delaying, are attempting to delay the cops from being interviewed during investigations. Once they have been, right, whether it's a shooting or whatever form of investigation, meanwhile, families are forced to interview immediately. There also, in this contract, PLE is asking for more access to the materials of witnesses' reports and interviews. Meanwhile, families never get access to the reports, and they are not provided the same, the same privileges. And also, this section is very intimidating, right? How is it that your abuser and someone that caused you harm can now review your testimony, can now review your, you know, the materials that you provided in an investigation? And so with all of this, right, there's a few questions that come to mind. One, how is it that these, that this whole negotiation is behind closed doors, especially when the police union gets so much money of our general funds? Why are these secret conversations? What prohibits them from being public conversations? I would like councils and the city to please answer that. And then two, how much is this costing us as taxpayers? So those are two questions I want to leave and hope that legal or the budget department can help answer. can help answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss, Walt will be followed by Luke Black.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Walt Gray. I'm a community activist in West Phoenix. One thing I'd like to see in the negotiations is consideration of hiring the custodians and service workers as civil service regular city employees. They've been in contract status for 10 years and they are integral part of smooth city operations. And I think that they should be given a civil service status. I also think it's good, just a good practice. When I was employed in state government, it was used then. And that's across-the-board increase every few years. All the increases are percentage increases. And it's good to have an across-the-board increase every few years to recognize that the lower-level employees who, whose income does not increase as fast as the others because their income is lower, recognize that they should get a little bit more money through an across-the-board increase because they're so vital to the overall performance of city government. I agree with the people who commented earlier about public observation. Yeah, I don't know if you want, you know, public, public, just people randomly attending the negotiations with the unions, but certainly there should be some kind of, the union and not the employees' wages and benefits make up a tremendous part of the general fund. So that's a very major thing. And I think it's worthwhile to have a public observation in some form that everybody agrees to. I would also feel, I also believe that, that plea, the negotiations with plea should be delayed and no pay increases should be granted to city council members until we stop the practice of having...
Mr. Black will be followed by Hannah Heyman.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Luke Black. I am a resident of City District 5. I'm asking that the council reject the terms of this contract immediately and proceed to open the negotiations of this contract to the community. The terms agreed upon in the police contract will define the largest budget item in the general fund. Over $600 million taxpayer dollars are being discussed here. And the police contract defines the terms under which the police are legally allowed to murder us. Why are these contract negotiations being done behind closed doors? Why are police negotiating with police about our lives without us? Why are the people of this city only given one opportunity to weigh in on how our tax dollars are spent? Why are the people of this city given only one opportunity to speak to the terms of a contract that has so much weight in our lives? Why is plea and not the people of this city given the opportunity to define safety for our community? We demand better. We demand transparency. I ask that you immediately reject the terms of this contract. The people of this city have the right to participate in negotiating the terms of the police contract. Reject this contract and open the negotiations to the community. Thank you.
Hannah will be followed by Vanessa DeCarlo.
The murderous Phoenix police have been found year after year to be the most violent in the nation. And still, the cowards on city council throw more money at them every year and give them the privilege of negotiating their harmful contracts behind closed doors. Why is the cop union, who harasses activists and works to protect the violent murderers of our black, indigenous, and Latinx neighbors, allowed to negotiate in secret? Because they bribed our mayor and the city council. Phoenix police are requesting a $744 million budget, far more than any other city department. As residents of Phoenix, we are the ones footing that bill. We have every right to know what goes on in your secret negotiations. The meetings must be publicly livestreamed and the city must allow the public to have a say. Please using this contract to increase their power and decrease transparency and accountability. City council should be fighting to increase accountability and transparency for a department that is the most violent in the nation. This contract will allow cops to delay interviews after they kill or brutalize community members so they can review body cam footage and get their story straight with their union rep. This is unacceptable. You should be stripping them of power, slashing their budget, and looking into the community for leadership. The fact that you're considering this violent contract when the people of the city have been in the streets demanding you defund and abolish the anti-black murderers known as Phoenix police is disgusting. Mayor Gallego likes to sit up here and say how much she cares about the community and how concerned she is. Then why did your office allow these secret meetings? Why do you always choose the path of harm? Why are you removing people from the list of public comment today at the last minute? Why did your staff advise abandoning the public rights of way in order to criminalize the houseless people living there, Mayor? Choose today to stand up for something right. Make these meetings public and reject plea's power grab.
Vanessa will be followed by Sophia Alicia.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Plea is not an employee or union. It is a political lobby funded by taxpayer dollars. Plea used our tax dollars to lobby against true community safety and well-being this year by endorsing and supporting political candidates who share their authoritarian and racist views. It is unacceptable that the city is funding plea when it shields police disciplinary records from future efforts to publicize Brady lists. It misleads the public about civil unrest, produces intentionally misleading and incomplete footage of critical incidents while fighting against the release of the complete footage and undermines the city's occasional accountability efforts by lobbying other branches of our government, like, like the legislature, to protect police from political movements. It is absolutely unbelievable that the Phoenix police budget is almost entirely controlled by plea and the MOU negotiations with city council. How is that possible that no other actual union has this type of power? Negotiations should be public and the people should have a say in any and every discussion about how the government uses our tax dollars. Of course, you prefer to negotiate with plea behind closed doors, especially today when you are witnessing the biggest movement since the civil rights era. We know you are going to give plea what they want, more funding, less transparency, and protection from discipline. But you should know that we are watching and there will be a political price to pay for your cowardice in this critical moment, less accountability. Are you kidding me? I have never seen this in any other job, in any other position. And not even the council members can attend the negotiation? It is nonsense, absolute absurd nonsense. Coming from a completely different profession, I have never heard of such a thing. I implore you to include the community, really make this transparent in not only name but in action. Thank you so much for listening.
Sophia will be followed by Paris Moore.
Hello, my name is Sophia Alicia. I help run the Unsheltered Phoenix social media page. I have been on these council calls too many times. And each time, me and my comrades struggle to, to come up with new and creative ways to tell y'all that we don't feel safe with more police on our streets. We constantly are trying to come up with new narratives and trying to be reactive and gain support at last minute because these meetings are not accessible. And, and I'm, I'm done, I'm done trying to appeal to council. I don't really have a lot to say to y'all, to be honest. The only thing I want to say to, to Councilman Nowakowski, who probably isn't even listening right now, to be honest, is that, that we see you, the community is watching you. And I don't know directly how you're involved with plea, but I do know that you stand to benefit from these lack of transparent negotiations. Today, I was witness to a brand-new baby born in the zone, the area known as the Zone off of Jefferson and 9th Avenue through 13th Avenues. And, and this is so wrong. It's so wrong. We need so much more than overpolicing. And I don't know how to say it any differently than all of the other times we've said it. I don't know what could get through to you guys. I really don't. I wish you could have been there. I wish you could have been there and seen that beautiful new life born in the East End that you all are trying to abandon, to criminalize further. I wish you could have seen that because maybe then you would see that we need social programs and we need housing and we need to stop criminalizing people for simply being homeless. There's, you guys put this motion forward, 91, forward without any alternative. I'm so embarrassed of you.
Paris is followed by Anna Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Paris Moore. I live in South District. I'm speaking in opposition to this and into, in opposition to plea. We know, you know, we all know throughout the summer and in Phoenix that the police are killing black and brown people, black and brown people in Phoenix. And you are doing nothing. If you let this, let police lie today and give them everything they want, as we've been asking you repeatedly, over and over and over, to stop, to just have like even an ounce of accountability on these police, and you just won't, I don't know, I, I'm going to say the same thing as Sophia said before me. I don't know what we need to do for you to listen to us once. Um, the, there's, you're spending all this money on the police and they just kill and you do nothing. And then they kill again and you do nothing. And what are we getting out of this council? What are we getting out of this government except for organized murder? For real. And plea is not a labor union at all, just as people said before me. Throughout history, at any time, workers have been trying to get their rights. The police have been there making, making it harder for them and repressing them. And so I just, I ask you to please, please have some accountability on police once. Some transparency would be nice, but accountability is the key, for real. I yield my time. Thank you.
Anna will be followed by Daylin Rogers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This is Anna Hernandez, resident of District 4. Once again here to remind you guys at city council that we, anytime that there's an opportunity for you guys to build trust with the communities, that you guys seem to shy away from it. You know, I'm not going to hash out what's happened in the past, but with the civilian review board and such, but now we have another opportunity where you guys can really show commitment to the community and not to the city of Phoenix Police Department and letting predictate how the contracts are written behind closed doors and the community not knowing anything about it, not being involved and being able to input into something that directly affects us day in and day out. I would like to remind everybody that police officers are civil servants to the community. So the fact that they try to negotiate these contracts behind closed doors shows no willingness on their part to build that trust with the community. And I, I don't understand why that's such a difficult thing to achieve here. And you as city council members that we've all elected to try to lead us, you continue to let us down each and every time, especially to my family that, my brother, you know, was lost to police violence. And we keep telling you, the families that have endured the results of these previous contracts that are negotiated, you know, in the dark, behind closed doors, we are so affected by this. And we're out here telling you over and over again what is needed so that you guys, so we can trust what's happening and you guys still choose to ignore us. So I'm asking to, for all, all the members of this council to not let these negotiations, negotiations happen behind closed doors. Let us be involved. We cannot keep raising and throwing more money at a problem that hasn't been fixed before. And we just need to be involved and hopefully you guys really take heed to what we're asking because we do need transparency, we do need accountability. And the community is here, shows up time and time again to demand some of this to happen. And I don't know why you guys keep ignoring us.
Daylin will be followed by Valerie Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll keep it short. We don't want a plea MOU with increased police rights and increased money for police. Give that money to the unsheltered. But it makes sense why Phoenix will give plea whatever they want in closed-door meetings. It will solve the unsheltered problem in Phoenix by sending an overpaid police army to jail them instead of properly investing the money in social programs. City council, block this MOU so OAT and CRB can work as intended. And vote no on item 91 and don't block our voices. Actually, one more thing. I went down there and I got a, there's so many hurting people down there. I went down there to get, to get statements and half of them didn't even want to speak up because they're afraid of retaliation if they're on the wrong side of this politically. You, I just can't believe that you guys can really support, I just can't believe that you guys could support that measure. And that, I'll yield my time from there. I'm just so appalled. Around Christmas, around Christmas, you guys want to do this? Whatever, let's move forward.
Valerie will be next, followed by Gladiela Lopez Felix.
Hi, my name is Valerie Hernandez, or Valeria Hernandez. I am 27 years old. I'm a non-binary, asexual Chicana. I'm an anarchist, I'm a feminist. And I wanted to read my comment to you guys. But before I get into that, I wanted to take a moment of silence for the lives that we have lost. Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, many, many countless black lives, brown lives, as well in Phoenix, Arizona. So let me get this straight. Y'all want to fund the police more, but they ain't doing their jobs. So wait, you're giving them more money to kill black and brown folk? Do you hear that? Do you smell that? That's corruption. Defund the police. Please, for the love of God, stop letting police officers kill people of color and black indigenous people of color. Serious. They're meant to protect and serve our community, not create more harm. Do better. I oppose any agenda item, whether it's this agenda item, 36, next week, the week after that. This is literally embarrassing at this point that we are even having this meeting. The police, especially the Phoenix Police Department, is so far gone. And if you guys do not stop plea, then my generation will. We voted out Trump. It was the most Latinas that voted so far, I think, in an election in Arizona. So if we can vote out Trump, we can vote out anyone. That means, that means any people in our local community. Thank you.
Ms. Lopez Felix will be followed by Beth Ellison.
Yes, this is Gladiela Lopez. And I'm here to say that I oppose this, this negotiation, this, the fact that contracts are being negotiated behind closed doors. Police are meant to serve our community. They're paid by our communities. And negotiations for police contracts should not be held behind closed doors. Police, again, are paid by us and we should be a part of the conversation. The public needs to have access to these meetings. And because these negotiations have been held behind closed doors, there, we have been consistently overfunding the police while our communities are in need of resources. That money could have gone to. There are so many things. There's unsheltered folks that need the assistance. There's education that lacks the funding. And we're throwing money into an organization that is murdering our people, that is not protecting us, is not making us feel safe, and that needs to be changed. The Phoenix Police does not need more money, our communities do. These negotiations have also made it easier... These negotiations have also made it easier for criminal cops to get away with acts of violence and other crimes against Phoenix residents. This must change and negotiations need to be public. Immediately reject this contract and open negotiations to the public. I yield my time.
Beth will be followed by Isabel Garcia.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Beth Ellison and I am a resident of Phoenix. After having reviewed section one-four of the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-three MOU for Phoenix PD which covers rights of unit members, I have concerns about officer protections that appear to overreach state law. Section one-four B-one notes, quote, "The union representative may assist and consult with the employee, attempt to clarify the facts or questions asked, and suggest other employees or witnesses who may have knowledge of the underlying issues." In contrast, Arizona revised statute thirty-eight dash eleven oh four indicates, quote, "The representative shall participate in the interview only as an observer," end quote. Next, the MOU states, quote, "The representative may make a request for a caucus prior to, during, or after the interview to bring the investigator's attention issues which may be violations of the MOU." ARS thirty-eight dash eleven oh four makes no provision for a pre-interview caucus or any other protocol by which the employee and representative would confer prior to the interview. Finally, I was surprised to learn the officer's past disciplinary actions may be purged from their personnel file or that uncursed disciplinary actions later deemed eligible for purging may not be considered in future investigations. In a field of work where misconducts had life and death consequences, failure to maintain or consider a cumulative record of incidents leaves our communities vulnerable to repeated acts of harm and holds citizens to a higher standard of conduct than law enforcement. In particular, I was disturbed by the limited timeframes and the, quote, "relevant nature" requirement attached to any at-request transfer. The practices of purging and limiting disciplinary actions that may be considered in the course of a transfer request suggest the system that protects and serves bad apples, not their victims or community. Thank you.
Isabel will be followed by Katie Beza.
Hello, my name is Isabel Garcia and I live in District Seven. Council, you must provide an explanation for why this negotiation process is done in secret, behind closed doors, with really no opportunities for Phoenix residents and community members to learn about this process and provide their input. This one day for public comment is not enough, nor should it be enough. We deserve more consideration from you, our representatives and public servants to engage in these spaces where our money, our safety, our future are are all being decided on. This year has been so difficult and you going through with this secret process is just another slap to the face to the thousands of people who marched to your doorstep this year demanding to defund the Phoenix Police. This negotiation process must be public. A document such as the Police Union MOU that gives the Police Department hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars and that essentially creates an alternative justice system that protects a violent segment of public workers who can go into my neighborhood in South Phoenix and surveil, harm, traumatize, kill with impunity cannot be negotiated in secret. Answer the question, why are these negotiations done in secret behind closed doors? I yield my time.
Katie will be followed by KJ.
Is in Phoenix. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, I just got a beep, sorry. Um, I was born and raised in Phoenix as well as many generations in my family before me. I spent most of my life in District Eight, but now I live in District Six. I'm also someone who has been directly impacted by the protections police are afforded because of the MOU. I would like to start off by saying that I think it is absolutely appalling that the negotiations with plea happen in secret, not in front of the public. You are discussing not only our safety, but our taxpayer dollars. While the community demands transparency, the very contract that permits or denies us transparency is done behind closed doors. Can't get any more ironic than that. I obviously oppose any changes or existing verbiage that would lessen transparency and accountability within the Police Department. One of the changes I find most disturbing is allowing a police officer to have an opportunity to watch body cam and listen to witness interviews prior to giving their own statement. I'm also opposed to plea having power over where police are transferred within the department. I am opposed to police being able to request any disciplinary action against them, no matter how long ago it was, be removed from their record. The police cannot continue to police themselves. No more money to please, to pay police backing lawyers. I wish I had enough time to go over everything I oppose. During these negotiations, does anyone think about the people? Human beings, your community members that are affected by the protections that are afforded police in this contract? Does anyone think about the innocent? Does anyone think about the people that are trying to obey the law, try to comply? Or maybe are in the middle of a mental health crisis and are killed or badly injured by an officer? I want you all to think about the fact that it could happen to anyone. Could happen to your son, your brother, your father, your relative that's illegal gun owner. No matter who you are, trust me, it can happen. The fact that this contract hinders the office of accountability and transparency and it, if you keep ignoring the demands of the public, how do you expect to gain trust? What job in the whole wide world allows you to take a human life, cost their employer millions of dollars, and you're still able to remain employed? What message does that send to the rest of them?
KJ will be next, followed by Ben Loughlin.
Hello, my name is KJ Dobyan. I'm a citizen, resident, and business owner of Phoenix. And I would also like to echo uh many of the sentiments around transparency and that these negotiations need to be open to the public. Um, I also am very concerned after reviewing the MOU, um particularly for the section one-dash-four, the rights of the union unit members of the current City of Phoenix MOU, the uh current language, excuse me, of the MOU appears to make the MOU provisions supersede relevant um existing Arizona law. The MOU gives the union representative the ability to assist and consult with the employee. Again, remember, this is an employee who is a public servant with the intent to clarify the facts or questions asked and suggest other employees or witnesses who may have knowledge of the underlying issues. ARS thirty-eight dash eleven oh four provides that "The representative shall participate in the interview only as an observer." This does not give any extra capability to assist the employee as stated in the MOU. Next, the MOU states, "The representative may make a request for a caucus prior to, during, or after the interview to bring the investigator's attention uh issues which may be violations of the MOU." However, there are no provisions in ARS thirty-eight dash eleven oh four that creates a pre-interview procedure for the employee to meet with the representative. The above rights given to employees through this current MOU do not exist within the law. As a citizen, I want to see an MOU that is fair to both police and the community. A community that every police officer takes an oath to protect and to serve. And I do understand that the assistant city manager's job to negotiate them with you and hope, and I do hope that Mr. Dehany will note these concerns during the upcoming negotiations. Thank you. I yield my time.
Ben will be next, followed by B. Toy.
My name is Ben Loughlin. I live in District Four. Um, in the two years since y'all last negotiated a contract for plea, you've spent over one-point-three billion dollars on Phoenix Police salaries and benefits alone. How is it possible that y'all can negotiate something this consequential behind closed doors, especially with a department that's proven to be as violent and unaccountable as this one? And how can y'all even consider giving Phoenix Police a five percent raise, additional bonuses, increased sick pay cash outs, and a healthcare trust for retired cops when thousands of people across our city have lost jobs, healthcare, and housing due to COVID-nineteen? These negotiations need to be brought into the public. Right now, four of the negotiator, four of the eight negotiators on the city's side are police officers. So in essence, we have cops negotiating with cops to get the best deal for, wait for it, more cops. City manager Zerker, it is my understanding that you have a choice who you put on the city's negotiation team. I wish I needed to ask you why the heck you would stack the city's negotiation team with Phoenix Police employees when you're negotiating with the Phoenix Police Union, but I don't need to. You've shown us time and time again that y'all are unwilling to place the needs of community over the priorities of plea. You don't get to write op-eds embracing police reform with one hand and then negotiate a police union contract in secret that actively decreases transparency and accountability with the other hand. That's messed up and exactly why we can't trust y'all to prioritize the health and wellbeing of the community. Open the negotiations and stop giving money to this police department. Thank you.
B. will be followed by Jennifer Hernandez.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Mayor, uh, Phoenix City Council. Um, my name is Toy. I'm resident of District Seven. Uh, I'm here to speak in opposition to the police union contract proposal. Um, first of all, I want to speak against the secretive nature of these negotiations. Community members are going to directly feel the results of what decisions are made regarding the police union contract and are nearly completely shut out of that process. Phoenix City officials once again are trying to take what should be public proceedings and shut out community input on the topic of policing in our city in order to protect and empower the deadly, violent criminal organization known as the Phoenix Police Department and their political machine, the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. The backroom nature of these negotiations are another glaring example of the corruption of our public servants by special interests who intend to direct more taxpayer money away from services that are desperately needed and benefit our entire community toward police who are bringing harm to our community instead. Even now, community members are speaking to empty chairs and blank screens because our council members can't be bothered to show their faces while receiving public comment. I oppose any new money for police raises or benefit increases during this time when so many residents of Phoenix are suffering the pain of income loss. Honestly, I cannot believe the cold-hearted greed of plea to ask for more money instead of bearing the costs of the current crisis along with the rest of our city. I think that alone speaks to whether or not Phoenix PD and plea have the best interests of Phoenix residents at heart. Finally, Phoenix City Council cannot approve more protections for police officers who commit wrongdoing and bring harm and violence into our communities. This is wrong and Phoenix City Council cannot accept these shameful proposals. Finally, I just want to say, cops out of labor, y'all are strike breakers and slave patrols who serve white supremacy and bosses, not workers. Get a real job instead of oppressing our communities for a paycheck from the taxpayers' pocket.
Jennifer will be followed by Marty Winkler.
Good afternoon, public servants. My name is Jennifer and unfortunately, my representative is Michael Nowakowski in District Seven. I just want to say that I am in opposition of the plea contract. In the, in two years since the last police contract was negotiated, the city has spent over one-point-three billion paying for the salaries and benefits of Phoenix cops. These are resources being taken from our communities. The priorities for city council should not be driven by priorities by the priorities of the police, but instead the priorities of the community. And we should not be having secret conversations with police union. Make negotiations public because these are our public tax dollars. This is our money that you are trying to negotiate. No one should be allowed to negotiate in secret when it's our money and allowing the Phoenix Union Police Contract to be negotiated behind closed doors has resulted in one of the most violent and unaccountable departments in the country. It is disgusting that police demanding the City of Phoenix gives PD a five percent raise for additional um bonuses that are going to their pockets that are literally not benefiting us in any type of way that could be used for all our babies to be able to go to Head Start for free, which was not the case for me where they almost kicked my daughter out because I was literally not making enough money. That is stupid. That should not be happening. Everyone should have access to education, especially our little ones. So why is this money still going to police? Why, why are we giving these people our public tax dollars so they can kill us? And I'm not gonna say thank you because I'm not, I'm not thankful for y'all.
Marty is next, followed by Maria Sanchez.
My name is Marty Winkler. Reject this plea MOU and open it up to the public instead of secrecy, which is the standard of the seven-hundred-and-forty-four-million taxpayer-dollar budget for only three thousand police and thirteen hundred staff. Gross misconduct, excessive force, assault, unjustified killings, lies, deceit, corruption, collusion, conspiracy, secrecy. No more purging violent and corrupt cops' records. No pay raises for violent cops that would cover up a bloodthirsty assault on a new grandmother. I know all about how Phoenix Police can't be trusted to protect and serve except themselves. I've lived it for the past six years and I'm an extreme victim of Jason Gillespie and Phoenix Police. Phoenix Police immediately and continuously colluded and conspired in extreme cover-up with a false narrative to protect violent, maniacal Jason Gillespie, Sunnyslope Substation, Desert Horizon president, who bludgeoned me half to death after I called for help. Four fractures to the front and back of my skull, traumatic brain injury, almost lost an eye. Phoenix Police and the City of Phoenix have done everything in their power to cover up a horrific assault on an innocent woman who called the police for help and committed no crime. Professional standards didn't even interview him for eleven months and Phoenix Police refused to release the records for six months. They voraciously and maliciously prosecuted me for two years for false low slow, false lowest-level trespassing in an extreme attempt to get my federal civil rights case dismissed where I was found not guilty. They fought us with three teams of attorneys for almost five years. Incident of him horrifically assaulting another man and another man's extreme incident were all covered up and they were never in or purged from his personnel file. I am still fighting with the help of the Ninth Circuit, appointing me a pro bono attorney. Felto Williams, I'm sorry, isn't good enough. How do you, Senator Sotomayor, Jerry Williams, and Jason Gillespie sleep at night?
Maria will be our final speaker.
Hi, uh, my name is Maria Sanchez. I'm a resident of District Three. Um, unfortunately, my representatives never start. Um, and I'm also here to oppose this contract. Um, you know, it can have an impact for the next two to four years and you're trying to have negotiations with cops, negotiating with cops and with cops that have failed. These cops have failed. They have done nothing to 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 even show that they're gonna be held accountable for. They do. They have said and shown no actions of remorse for the violence that they have brought in our communities. We're talking about the most racist police union in the country. This is a police union that has supported Trump, that has backed Arpaio. And this council has proven how useless they are, especially just recently when you did nothing to find out resources and look for resources for undocumented community. And I'm bringing this up to remind us that this contract, we're talking about almost seven-hundred-million dollars. This is not okay for us to be funding this and we go to you and tell you what we need to improve our lives. Single moms, working class people are over here telling you what we need in order to improve our lives and you continue to throw more and more money into this department. They're useless. You are useless. Continue, you continue to ignore us. And I'm gonna finish this to let you know that community, even as young as you, as we can reach them, are finding out that this way of governance is not working for anyone and that this negotiation behind closed doors on things like getting access to more information early, unlimited unlimited material prior to interviews. Are you serious? Like, this is ridiculous. They're asking for more and more things that are not gonna ever hold them accountable and no signs of transparency. You have failed as a city and you have the opportunity to reject this contract and make, give us opportunity to, at least for community to know what's happening. This needs to be public. It cannot be negotiated behind closed doors. Do that bare minimum at least and stop funding them.
Thank you. That includes formal requests to speak on this item. Uh, we received one comment in support online, two-hundred-and-twenty-three in opposition, thirteen uh general comments and two neutral comments on this agenda item. Council member comments.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. To the people that just spoke calling our police officers rapists and murderers, they're nothing but part of the "defund the police" movement. They're pushing an evil agenda, an agenda of hate. And what they're doing is putting our citizens in harm's way. This council needs to stand up against this movement, stand up against this nonsense that we heard here today. We need to literally go and call out these individuals that that are attacking our police officers. Is it that much for us as a council, as a whole, to Is it that much for us as a council, as a whole, to say we support our police every single time we hear this nonsense? This is sad. These police officers do not expect anything from us, but what they do should and what the public should expect from us is that when we hear this type of nonsense, we call these people out. We call them out for their evil agenda, their agenda of hate, their agenda to destabilize our city of Phoenix. And if we don't start standing up to these individuals, we are going to end up like these Seattle, Portland, and other places around the country, Mayor. We have got to stand up in unison and call this BS out because these individuals are attacking the families of these police officers, they're attacking our police officers, and they're destabilizing and putting all of us in harm's way, Mayor. It's time to say no to these individuals.
Councilmember Garcia.
Mayor, we're getting messages in our office that there's more folks that were signed up to speak.
City staff, is there anyone who signed up in advance?
Mayor, the persons that have signed up in advance have spoken so far.
But I did note that there were 223 written comments and so would encourage people, you can request to speak or to provide written comments.
Mayor, can I, some comments?
Please.
Thank you. Well, I have my comments, but before that, I had some questions for Ed. First, I'd appreciate it if you can explain how this functions. We heard a lot of people speak about behind closed doors and how these negotiations happen. Can you explain kind of the process of these negotiations? And then I think specifically to answer some of those folks' questions, where in our, I guess, city policy, were these set up?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Garcia, so the, there is a meet and confer ordinance that lays out the process. I spoke a little bit about the dates in which things happen. The code gives the authority to the city manager to negotiate contracts with the city's recognized labor unions and the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association is a recognized labor union for police officers at the city of Phoenix. So we have a labor relations group in our human resources department that is non-police officers and they are not part of the police department. They represent the city manager and the city at the table. We do include some police leadership, not police officers from the union, but police leadership in order to be subject matter experts for our negotiators when it comes to issues being raised about, about how policing works that are addressed in the contract. The contract is negotiated in a specific timeframe that begins in January. It is also under the auspices of the Phoenix Employee Relations Board, which is also set up in the city code, that the contract is negotiated. I take direction from the city council, but I'd negotiate the contract and present to the city council a proposal for council review and approval change, whatever, but it would be, have to be approved by the city council and approved by the labor union itself. That takes place between January and at the outside, the end of May, the beginning of June. But I do want to make it clear that police are not negotiating with police. The lead negotiator is not a police employee. He is in the human resources department. The code does not specifically say that these take place, that they're not in public. Although I'm not aware of any labor contracts or other contracts really that we negotiate in public, it is contemplated in the code that there is a free exchange between the parties to reach an agreement that is then presented to the city council for review.
Thank you. And I know this is the beginning of negotiations. I had one more question before I had my comments. Do you all make an assessment of how much these increases would cost? For example, from what they turned in last week, and I think it was, I forget the percentages, 5% and 1%. What would you, I know I heard a couple of folks ask that question. Do we already have an assessment of what it would cost if that were to happen?
Thank you for that question, councilmember. It's important to note, so the, the contract that plea presented was their opening, opening position. So just to clarify for the public, the council is not approving this, this document that was presented. This is their beginning. This is the union's beginning. We have not even presented the city's counter to this yet because that doesn't start until January. We do, our budget and research department carefully costs each proposal made and it is identified with a cost to it. We have not done that yet. It's a, it's an action that the budget office is currently undertaking to, for example, I think there was a proposal for a 2.5% pay increase in year one across the board and then some one-time money. They will assign a dollar amount to that based on their analysis of the city's budget and each of those will have a cost associated with it before negotiations start in January.
And are those negotiations not with the freedom of public content? Like, so can someone do a FOIA on the meetings you all have or are those actually blocked from public?
Councilmember, those are not, yes, those are not meetings that are covered by the open meeting law. It's not, it's not a meeting of an elected body or an appointed body by the city council. So it is not covered by the open meeting law and it is not required to be open to the public.
Thank you. Those are the questions I had. So first wanted to kind of put on the record some pretty common across the country as community folks have been looking at these police contracts and how some of these police contracts block accountability. And so I'm going to read off those six and then have some more comments. Number one, and I'm saying this to staff, so hopefully you can think through these as you're going into the negotiations. Disqualifying misconduct complaints is one of them. Preventing police officers from being interrogated immediately. We heard several folks mention that today. Giving officers access to information that civilians do not get. It was really hurt to hear Katie and Ms. Hernandez talk about how hard it was for their families to obtain records when their loved ones were, were killed by our police department, that they weren't able to get this information. Requiring cities to pay costs related to police misconduct, preventing information on past misconduct, and then limiting disciplinary consequences for officers or limiting the capacity of civilian oversight structures. I think, you know, we've had conversations with staff about particularly 1-4 and all the issues we have there and I hope that city management can take these things into account. I'd like to thank all the people who spoke today on this item. I think we all continue to push our accountability and transparency and it's important we listen to community when it comes to these contracts. I think a lot of them are right that this is one of our biggest expenses and we should take them into account. I agree with a lot of folks as well that one meeting is not enough. I think, I haven't heard of, of community being involved, at least in Phoenix, in this particular matter. And so glad to see interest by community folks and hope that we can think through community processes moving forward. This contract goes beyond what any other unit members get during investigations. Not only that, but I think plea is asking for us to give and forget when officers are found guilty of misconduct by asking to hide files and by not owning up to the mistakes and, and trading in, the piece about trading in paid vacation instead of taking suspensions. I understand the need for officers on the field, but I think if someone's been found of wrongdoing, they shouldn't be able to trade vacation time. We continue and we have in the last month, you know, from 3 million to 1.5 to pay for police misconduct and for police to have more representation and more rights than anyone else in the city. Again, a reminder, we pay for them to basically be able to lobby us. The city's officers already have pensions, great pay, and an opportunity for raises and advancement, even when, when they're being investigated. So I don't, I don't think, you know, part of their demands is to, to be able to be given raises or transferred or do all these things even when investigated. Don't think that's right. I think police have more privileges and protections than any other employee of the city. These inequities have existed for far too long and we, I don't think it's fair for us to continue to abide by them. And I hope that in these negotiations, we can, you know, we learned anything from this pandemic is, everyone is as important as the next person and I hope that we can seek to have equity between the different labor unions, whether it's FIRE and ASATIA, any of the other folks that, you know, AFS me, all the other folks that work, the parks folks, I don't want to name all the folks that work for the city. But I think it's important for us to try to find equity amongst these folks and for plea not to continue to have privileges, specifically those that help them evade accountability. Thank you so much and good luck on these negotiations. I hope what the community said today and what we brought can be used to have a better contract.
Councilwoman Pester.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the city manager. As we start to go through this process, as you answered earlier, this is a, between the city manager, the city manager has the authority in the meet and confer to have this dialogue with the units or the unions. What I'm understanding, what I just heard, is that this is not a public process.
Councilwoman, that is correct in the terms of the meet, the negotiations are not open to the public. They're not public meetings.
Correct, but today or right now, this is where the public has an opportunity to voice their opinion.
That's correct.
And is this part of the process? Is, because I think there's confusion with the public, so I would like some clarity around this piece.
This is specifically a part of the process laid out in the city's meet and confer ordinance, that the unions have an opportunity to present their, their positions to the council and that the public has a, has an opportunity to present their, their ideas or their opinions of the union's positions to the council as well. So yes, this is part of that process.
Okay. Secondly, what I would like to know is if the public or the community asked to have a public dialogue or a, another way of voicing their opinion with the city manager, is that possible?
I hadn't contemplated that, Councilwoman. So yeah, I believe it is possible, yes.
Okay. I'm just saying that there's just another opportunity just or to maybe set up a link or something so that community could at least voice their opinion as we go through the process. There'll be several steps to get to where we need to get to. Or could you explain the process? It starts in January and then how does it go?
So the process is actually already started with the notice of intent to negotiate on December 1st, the unions who chose to presenting to the council on December 8th, the public opportunity to comment on that today, and then the negotiation with each individual union, and we have five of those unions, will begin in January individually with each of those groups and city management. There are two associations that also have a discussion later, but those five unions, which plea is one, that those negotiations occur and into, real quickly, through January and February and by March the 1st, we're required to notify the PERB, the Phoenix Employee Relations Board. If there's no agreement reached, we're required to notify that PERB that we are at impasse. And then through March, there is mediation if needed and then fact-finding in a hearing if needed. And everything is concluded by the middle of April and then ultimately comes to the city council for a decision in May or as late as June if there is no, if there's no agreement reached between the parties. It comes ultimately to the council to make the final decision if there's no agreement reached. If there is agreement reached, the council still makes the final decision, the council would approve it. But if there is no agreement between the parties, the council would impose a contract upon the labor group.
Okay, so then that's the whole process, really a six-months process, what I'm hearing. And I guess my other question is, if there is no agreement, then that's where we impose and as a council, we impose what we feel is fair or right in the agreement.
That's correct, Councilwoman. I should just clarify, ultimately, the council approves, approves it. So the council does not necessarily have to approve, does not have to approve what's presented by the city manager, although I try to work very closely with the council so that what I'm negotiating reflects the intent of the council so that if there's agreement with the union, what's brought to you is something that the council would, that would reflect the will of the council. However, the council always has the final say in approving the contract and if we cannot reach agreement between management and the labor union through, through a longer process, which is detailed, ultimately, the council can impose a contract upon a union as well.
Okay. The meet and confer, that's between the units or the union and the city manager?
Well, it's between the city, the city and the unions. The council as the body that approves, the city manager who is given the authority to negotiate the contract, but ultimately, the council approves.
Okay. So if anything wanted to be changed in the meet and confer, then how does, can you tell me that process?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. The meet and confer is an ordinance that was approved by city council at some point and has been, been revised over the years by the city council, but ultimately, changes to the process would need to be approved through revisions to the ordinance. So the council could make changes to the ordinance to make changes to the process.
And that's for the future?
That's correct.
That's not currently. I mean, like if I said I want to make a change to the meet and confer, that wouldn't happen right now.
The city attorney is nodding and saying that is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I appreciate your answers and appreciate the detail, a level of detail that you gave to us and also gave to the public, understanding what our MOU process is or, or as we go through the stages. Really appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, go to Councilwoman Williams and then Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Always in the past, Ed, we have had usually in April, public hearings around for each district. Do you intend to have those public hearings and get the public's input on the proposed budget at that point?
Councilwoman Williams, yes. That would be our schedule for the budget would again be public hearings for the community in April, correct.
Okay, because that gives people an opportunity to know what's being proposed line by line and give their input. And I will say, I remember very clearly when we imposed a contract before, so I know it's been done in the past and can be done again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I was going to say the same thing. We do have a budget process as well and that also gives an opportunity for the public to talk about what they'd like to see their money spent on. And I know in the past, we've heard from many a people that do talk about such things as our parks, arts, libraries, including police. So there are other opportunities for people to get out and speak about what they want to see us spending their tax dollars on. And I encourage everyone to get involved in the And I encourage everyone to get involved in those hearings. Hopefully, they won't be virtual, they may be, but I think it's an important process. And it goes hand in hand, I think, with the negotiations with the unions. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor and Councilwoman Stark, I should just also say, this really builds on all the questions from the previous three councilwomen. Before the council approves a negotiated contract, that contract is published and it is posted in an agenda and it does have a public comment on it before the council votes on it. So there is also opportunity for community input to the council at that part of the process as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
Sorry. I got asked, Ed, and I don't know, you can tell me. You know this process better than I do. I had got asked if it is wrong for employees to go to fact finding. And I think what the question really is or what they're getting to is that if any unit or unit or union goes to fact finding, then they're punished in the sense of going through that process because other unions or other units that signed before fact finding receive a benefit.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor. So it is not wrong for units to go to fact finding. Fact finding is a part of the process laid out in the city's code. I think what you may be referring to is, in the last negotiation, we offered a signing incentive, which was a percentage, a portion of a percent more pay to a group if they signed and did not go to fact finding. The idea there is that fact finding is a time consuming and expensive process. And if we can avoid that through a mutual agreement, we're always, we believe we're better off. And we did have a couple of unions who did agree to that. Some unions who chose not to that were not happy that they did not get the signing incentive. But that's just part of the bargaining process that we offered was that. But no, the short answer is it is not wrong to go to fact finding, it is a part of the process.
And you, I'm sorry, Mayor, I want to clarify some stuff. In you doing that in the fact finding piece, that is what's approved by council. You speak to us and we approve, yes, do that or go ahead. So we, I just want to put it out there that we are aware. We're, I guess, providing guidance.
That's correct, Councilwoman. Thank you for that clarification. You're correct.
Okay, and one last one, and I'm done then after this. Could the council pass some guiding principles for this process?
Could you tell me what you mean by guiding principle? I mean, I think the answer is yes, I'm just not sure what.
I'm just saying guiding principles in the sense that there's certain boundaries or certain processes with the meet and confer. I'm asking, could the council just provide some guiding principles? I think they're there. Like Councilwoman Williams said, there's the budget process. You can speak up in the budget process because that's where you will also see what is being asked by the different units and unions. And so I guess I'm going to more of just if there's other public input.
A couple of things there. So the council could certainly have that discussion of guiding principles and could adopt something formally, yes. I should just clarify though, in terms of the budget hearings, the negotiations process doesn't always line up exactly with the budget hearings because if we go to impasse or if we're in fact finding, though that may mean that the contracts are resolved after the budget hearing process in sort of regular time if we can come to an agreement before impasse and those things. We can, we know enough that we are able to have specifics during the budget hearing. What we often have to do though is to present sort of rough estimates of what we might have to pay in terms of labor cost increases during the budget hearing. They don't always exactly line up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council member comments?
Oh yeah, Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Please, Councilwoman.
Thank you, I appreciate it. First, Ed, thank you for clarifying about the process because I thought the comments saying that this is some sort of secretive process that nobody can track and nobody can get the numbers or the documents or anything was false. I think you highlighted with your dialogue with Councilwoman Pastor. Frankly, this is a long process with several chances for public input. We have public comment every meeting. Second though, to the comments that were made earlier by residents, I just, at some point, it is really hard to listen to these comments repeatedly made that are just horrific in their tone towards our officers. So for any officers who are listening, and I've said this before, please, please don't buy that this represents the community as a whole. We have 1.6 to 1.7 million residents in Phoenix. And obviously, other people travel to Phoenix during the day, so you're policing a much bigger number than that. I think you're doing a great job under extremely trying circumstances. It is really unfortunate that a smaller group is saying things that are just, just do not accurately reflect the community as a whole. And certainly, the way it's kind of being reported is that it is reflective of that body and that's just simply not true. I don't think most people in Phoenix want to wind up like Minnesota has or New York has. So the officers should know that they are valued. And if they were gone, they would surely be missed even by, I suspect, many of the people who spoke earlier. So to the officers, thank you for what you do. None of you is perfect. None of the council members are perfect. I believe we're all trying to do our best. But, but the comments are just repeated and it is really discouraging. But it should not let you be discouraged in any way, shape or form. So it is not the majority of our residents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional council member comments? All right, appreciate everyone who's participating. The process continues. We will not take any council action today. So we move to item 37, amendments to pay ordinance in accordance with human resource committee recommendations. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item 37.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Stark. This is an exciting item that will allow us to be a more competitive employer or electricians. Electrical workforce, I guess is a way to say it. Any council member comments before we go to public comments?
I do.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see this item moving forward on wage increases for our city employees. These work, these employees work very hard day in and day out and it is important that we recognize their expertise and their commitment. I want to, I want to say thank you to ASME 2384 for their leadership and for pursuing these needed wage increases. I think our city will do a much better job because of this and I think that the service that we'll be able to give to everyone that comes to the city of Phoenix is going to be better for this. So thank you so much and very excited to be able to vote for this.
Thank you. Any additional council comments before we go to our? All right, we have, we'll first begin with Ben Lund, followed by Chris Idleberg. Mr. Lund, the floor is yours. Mr. Lund.
I'm not there.
Yes, we hear you. Great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, I just want to support the approval that the city has recommended recommended for the increase in pay. I totally support it totally. And I do appreciate you guys taking the time out to do a job market study. It should be in the job market with every other market. And that will make the city a whole lot competitive in the future. So and I, it would enable the city to maintain recruitment and retention. So it is a great initiative and I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Idleberg is next, followed by Ralph Lopez.
First, my name is Chris Idleberg and I am the vice president of ASME Local 2384. On behalf of our labor group, I would like to thank you for hearing me today on the matter of item number 37 on the agenda. Our electrician team are among the hardest working and extremely vital part of our workforce within the city of Phoenix. The importance of doing class and comp studies has been shown to be very critical to our operations, especially in relations to the findings borne out with the electrician classification. We need these studies to continue so that all of our groups in Unit 2 can be brought up to the compensation levels they deserve. It is not only good for the employees, also the city because when we can pay fair market wages, we can recruit and retain very talented candidates. As the data has proven, the city is about 16% below market and has a higher turnover rate than the national average of 5% by industry in the electrician class according to Bureau of Labor Statistics. So not having a pay increase in this classification for nearly 11 years has put the city at a severe disadvantage in acquiring and retaining good, hardworking electricians. This has been a problem for the city due to the pay disparity among other municipalities, utilities and simply industry wide in comparison to the city. Through the findings of the class and comp study, all departments in the city have indicated their difficulties in both recruiting and retaining quality candidates. The candidates are especially turning down jobs, job offers because of their concern for the pay. So representing ASME, I'm here today to ask the council to accept the recommendations put forth by Human Resources Committee 607 and approve the changes in the pay plans and pay grades so that the city can become more competitive in acquiring talented employees and help to mitigate the turnover rate within the classification. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez is next, followed by Frankie Samora. Hello? Go ahead.
Mr. Lopez, are you on the phone?
Mayor, it does not appear that we are receiving audio from Mr. Lopez. All right, then we will go to Frankie Samora.
Port of it. I'm an electrician here at the convention center. And I know the city is having a hard time recruiting and keeping electricians. And the main thing is wages. But going along with this study is showing that, yeah, you know, that we are behind. But I hope you guys do approve this because this will go a long way to keep the good electricians that we have now and also for future. So you know, the city of Phoenix should be top employer. We should be proud to say we are city employees. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is our final speaker today. I will turn first to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to mention sort of interesting with the last item. This is, this issue is actually a result of successful labor negotiations in the last cycle with ASME Unit 2. As the vice mayor noted, this was negotiated by ASME as part of their contract. And as a result, we did a study of a mutually agreed upon class, which was the electrician class. I also want to commend our HR staff who takes great pride in doing these studies, Lori Bays and her team with Greg Carmichael, but particularly Kathy McIntyre in our HR department, who does really a lot of the legwork, all the legwork. She probably has some people working with her too. And they take great pride in doing these and I think it's an excellent outcome. And it's an outcome that came about because of successful labor negotiations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any concluding council member comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
I'm just excited that we did this and that we've now become competitive and our electricians get the compensation that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, could you confirm that your motion was to pass this item as revised?
Yes, I can. Yes, we will pass item 37 as revised.
And I concur a second.
Thank you. You anticipated my next question, Councilwoman Stark. Roll call on item 37 as revised. Tassicio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakelski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero. Wonderful, thank you. We next move to item 44 to enter into an agreement with Opportunities for Youth and ASU. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 44.
I second. Sorry, Stark.
Wonderful. We do have one patient member of the public to speak. One of our newly elected school board members, Mukhtar, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor, and I appreciate all the work you guys did. And I know that you guys care about community and you guys doing your best to serve our communities. I do support this motion. And I just hope that whoever's going to work on this policy is going to partner with the communities and make sure all the community is going to benefit from this program.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Pastor.
So I'm really excited about this because I want to say, three years ago, four years ago, I'll tell you a short story, Mayor Greg Stanton now, Congressman Stanton said to me, oh Laura, I need you to go to a meeting with me on education. I show up at the meeting and it was Opportunity for Youth. And as I sat in the meeting, they said, oh, we need people to run for our board. And nobody really raised their hand. And at that point, Mayor Stanton looked at me and I was like, I don't know why you're looking at me. And next thing I know, I'm a tri-chair of the Opportunity for Youth Board. And so have been actively involved in it and really appreciate the fact that we're doing the IGA of all the good work that is happening within our communities as we know where the opportunity for youth are located within our districts and our zip codes, mainly in South Phoenix, Levine and Maryvale. So I'm happy to continue the good work.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I am certainly looking forward to supporting this one. It has been a tough time to be a young It has been a tough time to be a young person this year. And this partnership will give more opportunities for our young people to find great career and educational pathways. Thank you so much to our Youth and Education Office for their leadership. They are working on our My Brothers Keeper Initiative. And this will be an important step forward in that, making sure we have great opportunities for our young people from cradle to career. So glad to move forward on this one. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Tassicio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes, and just a quick comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said and thank the folks at Opportunities for Youth for their work. I believe this type of investment is what creates safer communities. So really excited for this. And thank you, Councilwoman Pastor, for your work.
Noakowski.
I forgot to say yes, but yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Wonderful, a great item. We next move to item forty-five, the Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport Concession Financial Relief Program. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
One Pastor.
I move to approve staff's recommendation for item forty-five for the continuation of percentage rent until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, with stipulations approved by the Transportation Infrastructure and Innovation Subcommittee on December second, two thousand and twenty. Additionally, I would like to add the following conditions to address employee equity within the concessions program and the specific challenges furloughed and laid off employees face as a result of COVID. To address those challenges, the concessionaires must offer a reasonable period for employees to return to work once notified of recall offer. A reasonable period should be at least forty-eight hours to respond to the recall offer and at least fourteen days to return to work to account for the CDC-published guideline for quarantine. The concessionaires must also ensure employees are eligible for recall for at least as long as the pandemic is expected to affect passenger traffic. Based on data from Moody's and considering the peaks during the holidays, it is reasonable to expect that recovery will not occur before December two thousand and twenty-two. And therefore, the commitment to recall employees must extend to December two thousand and twenty-two. Finally, given the importance of health insurance during this time, concessionaires should offer enrollment to recall employees for healthcare insurance currently offered immediately upon being recalled, ensuring that enrollment be completely as soon as the practicality possible to avoid lack of insurance for these frontline workers. I need a second.
Second. I'll, sorry. That would have beat me to it. I'd second it.
I think clearly Councilwoman Williams got that second. Thank you. Before, I think I was able to follow the motion. But just before we move on, would any council members like to hear the motion a second time?
Was to explain what she just said? Is that what you're asking?
I just wanted to make sure with our longer motions, we occasionally repeat them. I think I was able to follow it so everyone's good, we can go on, but.
I can repeat.
Okay, just have it repeated. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, Councilwoman, if you might just repeat it one more time, because I know many people are very interested in this item.
Sure. I shouldn't have troubled you just giving you all the motions. Okay. You want the whole thing or you want my three bullet points?
Three bullet points.
Okay. The concessionaires must offer a reasonable period for employees to return to work once notified of the recall offer. A reasonable period should be at least forty-eight hours to respond to the recall offer and at least fourteen days to return to work to account for the CDC-published guideline for quarantine. The concessionaires must also ensure employees are eligible for recall for at least as long as the pandemic is expected to affect passenger travel. Based on data from Moody's and considering the peaks during the holidays, it is reasonable to expect that recovery would not occur before December two thousand and twenty-two. And therefore, the commitment to recall employees must extend to December two thousand and twenty-two. Finally, given the importance of health insurance during this time, concessionaires should offer enrollment to recall employees for the healthcare insurance currently offered immediately upon being recalled, ensuring that enrollment be completely, well, completed. It should be ensuring that enrollment be completed as soon as possible to avoid lack of insurance for these frontline workers.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Pastor. Appreciate that. Whenever we don't have exactly the motion in the packet, I try to make sure people have a chance to follow what we are doing. Councilmember comments? Seeing none, we have many members of the public wishing to address the council. So we will begin with Tracy Gunderson. And Tracy will be followed by Deborah Ann Rutkowski.
I mean?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Tracy Gunderson and I've worked for HMS Host in the past nine years as a server. As many of you may remember, I have finished city council many times since I was laid off in March. I've talked a lot about wanting to return to work. And I'm here today again to oppose giving HMS Host more rent relief, because our future with the company continues to be uncertain with no guarantees of recall rights passed March. Secondly, as you know, we have filed a complaint with the City Equal Opportunity Department. I have also filed a complaint with the EEOC. I'm here today to tell you about what happened to me when I worked at Host and to ask you, as a city, to conduct a thorough investigation before considering extending HMS Host's lease. For the past three years, my supervisor and his assistants have constantly discriminated against me to create a hostile work environment. Over the years, I've been subject to personal insults, badgering, bogus write-ups, and a harsh disciplinary double standard at work. I eventually came to learn through other employees that my supervisor's unfair treatment wasn't simply because he disliked me. It was because I and other older women servers and bartenders had, in his view, aged out of the business and ought to be pushed out of the workforce. Indeed, he did not, in my observation, treat any of the men or younger women in this unit this way. I contacted the EEOC last year before any of this happened, last October, to initiate a complaint against the company, which is currently being investigated. And as I mentioned, I have filed a complaint with the City Equal Opportunity Department. I hope that you will ensure that the city conducts a thorough investigation of the treatment that I and my coworkers have experienced. Thank you so much for your time. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Deborah Ann is next, followed by Janelle Weaver.
Hi. My name's Deborah Rutkowski. I've worked at HMS Host for thirteen years as a bartender. And I'm here to ask you to oppose giving HMS Host rent relief and ask you to investigate this company. So hopefully, no one else will go through what I went through. Shortly after the current supervisor and his assistant transferred over to Blanco Taco, they began urging us to scale back work shifts and reduce my role at the restaurant. So I initially resisted, but eventually gave in to their demands, because it was made clear to me by another assistant manager that the supervisor had placed a target on my back. When I filed a grievance with the company about not receiving shifts in accordance with my seniority, my supervisor vowed to me directly that he would get me fired for having complained to HR, saying that older women bartenders like me caused too much drama. I was later told that the same supervisor said about me words to the effect that, "He wants to come over to the bar and see an old hag who is wheezing and coughing. We have to get her off the schedule." More generally, I noticed how much more poorly management treated older women. And I compared it to the men in the workplace. And the consistent mistreatment and pressure I experienced at work left me stressed and corresponded with a worsening of my asthma, which landed me in the hospital almost monthly since the environment I experienced ultimately drove me to leave two years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. We will go next to Janelle. But before we do that, just for our staff quickly, do we have Fatima, Vivian, or Salawit with us online?
Mayor, it appears that they are not on the line.
Okay. So then after Janelle, I believe then next would be Cheryl Grant. So Janelle, floor is yours, followed by Cheryl.
Hello. My name is Janelle Weaver. Hello, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, I'm one of the women that are, you know, involved with the age discrimination against HMS. But I support the rent relief for these companies, because, you know, I'm agreeing with, you know, what was just said. And also, I think it's a horrible shame to see the small minority companies kind of being punished along with, you know, and the airport. I worked there for twenty-five years and I thank you, City of Phoenix. I would still be there now if I hadn't been pushed out due to my aging out. But I'm basically here, even though I do support the rent relief, because we got to keep running. We just got to keep on going. But I beg of you, I beg of you, can you please investigate HMS? You know, the supervisors, on multiple occasions, I would be shushed by male employees and told to be quiet, because men were speaking. And we would be punished differently than the younger employees, the men employees. I went to HR and complained about all of this stuff and it would just cause the mistreatment to escalate. HR, they'll just deny anything. They'll just deny it and move the supervisors around and not address problems. And all the years that I worked there, I've seen a lot of things. And this is real, what's happening here to the people. And it's not just old people, it's minorities. And I beg of you, City of Phoenix, please look into this. And I think that you guys are doing a good job taking care of us people. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Cheryl is next, followed by Darlene Prendy.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Grant and I worked at HMS Host for nineteen years. As Janelle, I aged out, as she says. I'm here to ask you to oppose giving HMS Host the rent relief and ask for you to investigate this company. As an older woman worker at HMS Host, I feel I was also singled out for criticism by management after I commented on how the younger servers were idling while others worked. For example, for my manager, responded by telling me, "Too bad, you're not younger." Yeah, that was a joke. I also saw another woman treated in ways that I felt were unfair, as my coworkers here have explained. During my last year of work for HMS Host, I began experiencing anxiety. I'd just drive to the airport and I was freaked out. But I remember on one occasion specifically having to go sit somewhere in an empty area for about fifteen minutes to have my anxiety attack. It was, well, anyway. Thank you for listening and I urge you to strongly investigate.
Darlene is next, followed by Carmen Quintana.
Here to speak in opposition to HMS Host receiving money, the relief money from the City of Phoenix. Like the other women that have come forward, I'm also, I'm sorry, I also was a subject of unfair treatment near my time. I've worked there for over thirteen years as a server. As I've stated previously, I am willing to cooperate with the EEOC on the complaints my coworkers have requested in response. And will do the same for the City's Equal Opportunity Department. I call for the city to do a full investigation of Host workers' discrimination allegations. And I urge you not to consider extending the lease to HMS Host at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen is next, followed by Hiwit Kedain.
Hola.
Yes.
Hola, my name, mi nombre es Carmen Quintana. Yo trabajo para HMS por treinta y tres años. Y estoy aquí para apoyar.
Si puede esperar un momento para la doctor, por favor, Carmen.
Sí, señora, buenas tardes. My name is Carmen Quintana. ¿Y para quién trabaja, señora?
Para, para HMS Host por treinta y tres años.
And I've been working for HMS for thirty-three years.
Estoy aquí para apoyar.
And I'm here to support.
Buenas tardes. Y HMS Host ya ha recibido millones de ventas de la ciudad de Phoenix. Yo a mi vez recibí en octubre una carta de ellos diciendo que según ellos estaban despidiendo a las personas permanentemente.
And I've been, I received in October a letter indicating that they were firing people. And it was a permanent thing.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. Hiwit will be next. Hiwit will be followed by Bruce Mosby.
Okay. Fourteen years I worked in HMS Host. Now, a little bit, people, they seek one percent, she's passed away. One percent, she seek home and maybe working now, I don't know. But keep my job, can you please keep until a little bit the virus kept? Because I was, I was, I already sixty, or you're already. Now I'm scary. My husband, they have W D. Keep my job until a little bit better taken. I need money, even enough the money. Now they give for me two hundred to fourteen, because my money already finished. Now I need money more. I need saving my company until better the virus. Thank you so much. See you soon.
Thank you. Next will be Bruce Mosby, followed by Lira Jacobs.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Bruce Mosby. I own and operate two Pete's Coffee concessions in Phoenix Sky Harbor Terminal Four. I am an ACDB certified small business. I'd like to begin by thanking the entire city council. I'd like to begin by thanking the entire City Council for the rent relief we have received from April through December of this year. Because without it, we would be in an extremely dire situation. That rent relief, along with the city's grant program to the small businesses at the airport, has made a significant difference, allowing our concessions to hold on these last nine months. At the airport, we are all working very closely with Interim Airport Director Charlene Reynolds and her entire team, providing our weekly sales updates, employee recall reports, and communicating collectively about how to survive through this uncertain time. At my business, we have recalled all of our employees, 60% of whom have returned. The rest have found other employment. The air traffic and travel numbers remain extremely erratic, reflecting in our concession sales fluctuating between 30 and 45% of 2019 numbers. Unfortunately, we will not see recovery occurring until sometime in 2022 or beyond. As a result, we respectfully support continued rent relief through December 2021. And also, for additional consideration, we very much need contract extensions that will help our small businesses to renegotiate our bank loans. Again, thank you for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Liren will be next, followed by Joya Kaiser.
Mayor Gallego and members of the City Council, my name is Liren Jacobs, and I'm an HR business partner with SFP America. I'm here in support for a continued concession relief, but mainly to make sure that I'm available to you for any HR-related questions you may have related to SFP America. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today and for your past assistance, and most importantly, for your thorough approach to this whole process. I will remain on the line for the duration of this item to answer any questions that may arise. And again, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Joya will be next, followed by Scott Welding.
Good afternoon. Joya Kaiser of Custom Unlimited Enterprises, again calling to thank you for your consideration of rent relief for the tenants of Sky Harbor. As 2020 comes to a close, I reflect on the magnitude of this year. This year has forever changed how we live our lives and how we run our businesses. For me, it draws remembrance where my father, my employer, not yet my business partner, lovingly teased that I had earned an honorary MBA for successfully bringing our family airport business through the recession. The level of business prowess and fortitude required to get through that seemed enormous. And 10 years ago, there was no way I would have ever been able to envision the impact of something like 2020. All of us in the concession industry continue to work hard to stay afloat. We are running our businesses in ways we never have before with less team members, less supply chain, less access to capital, and less security. The extension of MAG relief through 2021 allows a level of certainty that gives us something solid to build upon. By removing MAG from our budget, you enable us to plan long-term for things like hiring, inventory stock levels, and cash flow. As proficient as we may be in running our businesses, we know that without the support of our partners, the City of Phoenix, our task was near impossible. I continue to thank you for your careful consideration as you consider the ecosystem that is the Sky Harbor Airport. I recall with gratitude the experience I gained through 2010, as I know it directly contributed to my survival this year. And I hope for all of us to end 2020 in appreciation of the wisdom and grace that this year has given us. Happy holidays to you and your loved ones.
Thank you. Scott is next, followed by Nick Wood.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Scott Welding with SFP America. I'm here today in support of your continued support of concessions relief for tenant companies at Sky Harbor. We're extremely grateful for your timely consideration of further rent relief actions and for the potential opportunity to claw back out of the deep financial setback caused by this pandemic by providing your tenants at Sky Harbor with additional lease terms. In light of the last discussion on this matter, I wanted to be available to answer any questions you may have of SFP America, and I will remain on the line through the duration of this agenda item. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Nick will be next.
Mayor, members of the council, Nick Wood, Snow and Water One, Arizona Center, and I represent HMS Host. Thank you very much for the motion and the second and hopeful support of the motion. One question of clarification with respect to the term enrollment, is that the same as being effective? Or is enrollment, they're simply enrolled, and then each individual insurance carrier goes through the process of insurance becoming effective?
I think if you go ahead and complete your comments, and then we can...
That's really my comments, Mayor, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, okay.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Williams.
Hi, as I understand it, that means once they're hired, they're then enrolled in the process. And it has to follow whatever that insurance process is, but they are going to be guaranteed to get their health benefits.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, our chairman of the Transportation Subcommittee. Okay, that concludes our public comment today. So we will move to council member comments or questions. Councilmember Garcia.
Mayor, I had a quick question, and I don't really know who this goes to. But in the situation that folks are recalled to work, and let's say, for example, that's next February, and the pandemic numbers are still up, and a person wants to opt out but still remain in the list if at a later time they could come in, is that something that they can do? And again, I don't even know who this question is to.
And I think this item impacts many different employers, and I don't know to whom the question should be addressed either.
I think it goes to Charlene.
Mayor, to members of the council, Mayor, you are actually right. We have eight primes. So relative to the determination of when that start, I would have to have each representative from our prime speak to that. We do have SSP's representative on the phone as well as Host. And if either one of them could speak to that question for their respective companies, then I would yield to them for that answer.
Wonderful. Could staff, so I think we have two folks who have expertise from SSP and one from Host. So if staff could unmute Mr. Wood, Ms. Jacobs, and Mr. Welding and give any of them who would like a chance to respond.
Mayor, Mr. Wood is being unmuted.
Wonderful, Mr. Wood.
Yeah, Mayor, I apologize, I missed the question.
So, the question is, I know we're going to ask our folks to be able to come back, but will they have an option to opt out? And the example I gave is the pandemic numbers are still too high. Let's say it's a person that might have some vulnerabilities, and they still want to remain, they would want to come back at some time but don't feel it's safe to come back. Would they be able to be put on an extra list or have the opportunity maybe to come back at a later time when, let's say, the numbers are down?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Garcia, yes. Obviously, if we have employees that are very fearful of coming back because of COVID and they're uncomfortable, they are not required to return. And of course, they get pushed back on the list until they're ready to return. And then they will give us notice that they're ready to return. At that point, they'll be back in the queue.
Thank you. Any additional questions, Councilmember Garcia?
Just wondering if it's the same for everyone. But yeah, I would like for us to be able to make sure that we were at least taking care of that. I think, I'll just get my comments out of the way. I think what we're doing is bare minimum for the workers. I wish we could be doing more. I know this dialogue continues, and I know how important it is, especially for the smart businesses to get this done. And I know my colleagues at the TII Subcommittee will continue to work on this. I just would want us and our department to make sure that we're looking out for the workers. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a question from Mr. Wood. Nick, are you still there?
If staff could unmute, wonderful, Mr. Wood is unmuted.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Guadalupe, yes, I'm still here.
Great. So those comments that you just made about workers feeling nervous or scared of coming back to work just because the COVID numbers are still extremely high and a lot of them have, I know HMS Host at least has a lot of workers that are over 60 years old and either themselves have either asthma or diabetes or have people in their homes with these conditions. Is this something that you guys would do moving forward? Or is this something that you guys were already doing?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Guadalupe, it's something that the company has already been doing. And I'll give you a quick example. You know, the next person on the seniority list receives a call. He or she is very concerned about coming back because of fear of COVID and exposure, particularly if they're in a vulnerable age or in the vulnerable category. They're not required to come back, they do not lose their seniority. They basically get placed, for lack of a better term, on the bench. And then when they are, they feel better about coming back, then they'll give notice to the company, at which point, again, they don't lose their seniority. However, they don't replace any workers that have been previously hired since they were unable to come back. But they still keep their seniority, and if they're next on the list, then they will receive the call next on the list.
Okay, well, that's very interesting. I'm assuming, I mean, it's a little unfortunate that they're not on the line today, right? We have two representatives from SSP. And look, and I understand that you're just representing them, but I have a bunch of questions for them. And the reason I ask this is because we just had a worker, a very unfortunate, and this is something that I was very scared about that was going to happen, and it happened, right? We have a worker, her name is Keristy Takly Devise, and she worked for HMS Host since 1997. And she was recalled to come back to work. She was very scared to come back to work, and she was told that if she didn't come back to work, she would be terminated. And she came back to work, and this past weekend, she died of COVID. And it's very, very, very unfortunate that this is starting to happen. She, you know, she had a family that she had to support. She's over 60 years old, her English is not good. And she knew that if she lost this job, she was not going to be able to get another job. So it's very unfortunate to see how these workers that have given 20-plus years to the company that come to this country for opportunities, and this woman just died this past weekend from a, you know, from a stroke, but it was because she had COVID and her heart just couldn't take it anymore. So I've, you know, so I would like, I would have loved for HMS Host to be on the line and to be able to explain this to me and what happened, because it's very clear that they, you know, that HMS Host still picks and chooses what are the workers that they will give a pass to and what are the workers that they want to get rid of. And they clearly got rid of Keristy, you know, but it's unfortunate, you know, that she, you know, that she's now dead. And she's, and it's because the company would not let her stay on the list and wait for her to be ready to come back to work after this pandemic was over. And just like her, there's a lot of these workers that are in that same position. And to me, like, it's how many, how many, I think one death is, it's already, it's unacceptable. And I'm not, and I'm just really scared to see how many of these workers are, how many more of these workers are going to die because of this? And it's very unfortunate and incredibly responsible for HMS Host just to send you to take the punches and not having them being here to respond to a lot of these questions that I'm sure, that I'm sure a lot of my colleagues might have for them. And I do want to thank SSP for being on the line. And I also want to thank you for trying your best, but it's very unfortunate that, once again, if this happened at Subcommittee, and it's happening again where HMS Host is just not showing up. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Nick.
Mayor, if I may have your permission to respond?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor Guadalupe, yes, it's very tragic and sad that an employee passed away. I do want to clarify some information that I received directly from my client. And that is, again, I can't speak to causes of death, but I can tell you what was not. And the employee that you just referenced did not have COVID. And the employee that you referenced did have insurance and that the expenses have been paid for and continue to be paid for following that tragic situation. But the employee that you referenced did not have COVID.
Well, I guess we're going to have to look at the death certificate because that's what we're being told, that she had COVID. And because of COVID, she had, she had the stroke. And, and yeah, like, I don't trust a single word that HMS Host has to say. And again, I hate it, you know, that they're sending you to take these punches. I just wish they would come, they would come onto these calls and really, and really talk about this. And yeah, this is incredibly, incredibly unfortunate, you know, that even to this stage, you know, they just won't say the truth. I just don't believe that, but thank you.
Any additional council member comments?
Mayor, I have a comment for Charlene.
Councilman Noakowski.
Is Charlene still around?
Yes, I am.
She is.
All righty.
She is at the dais, so go ahead.
Hey, Charlene, I know that a while back, we had a lot of employees, both from SSP and Host, and they were both complaining that they weren't getting breaks for 15 minutes. Did you all work that out? Because I know that when you're wearing a mask for more than three hours or four hours a day without a break, that's hard, especially for anybody working in a kitchen, working a cash register, or just working for four hours straight with a mask on and not being able to take it off. So was that worked out, or wasn't it?
Mayor, to Councilman Noakowski, it is my understanding that each one of the primes provide, as required, for those employees to have breaks. I have not received any complaint from any staff that they have not received breaks. But we do have staff within the terminals. What I would do to follow up is to have my staff, because sometimes, including myself, we do things, what we call secret shops. And we can ask those employees directly to confirm that they are getting those breaks, and we're happy to do that because that's just a part of overall compliance. That was a part of the last relief package to our concessionaires.
Well, I believe we have both of the... Well, I believe we have both of the primes on the phone. Can can we ask that question to both of the the representatives of both of the primes to see if it's happened or not?
Mayor, we are unmuting Scott Welding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor to City Councilman Noakowski. I think this, I hate to bounce around here, but I think this would be better answered by Lea and Jacobs, who's in charge of Human Resources and lives here in Phoenix and would have better insight as to what's happening here at the Phoenix branch.
Okay.
If you could unmute Lea and Jacobs.
Yes, Mayor and Councilman Noakowski, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Hi, this is Lea and Jacob. Just wanted to respond. Unfortunately, we do see quite a bit of business lulls in our current situation. So while that's not great for business, it does allow for us to give ample time for our individuals to take breaks away from their masks if needed. But I can also assure that we are making it a very high priority as far as safety, as well as just giving the people the time that they need. So they are not being denied those breaks by any means, and they're taking them as needed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Pastor.
Is there anybody?
Was there somebody from Host?
I'm sorry.
That was SSP's response. Anybody from Host?
Well, that's what I was going to ask.
Mr. Wood.
Other than Nick. On the line other than Nick Wood?
I think Councilman, let's go to Councilman Noakowski's question to Mr. Wood.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, the policy that's been adopted by HMS Hosts is the same or similar to SSP, and that is because of the circumstances of having to wear the protective gear, et cetera, the the employees are allowed to take breaks whenever they feel it's necessary and as long as they feel it's necessary.
All right, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
I have a question for Ed. Some of the women that I've talked to previously and were on the phone today from Hosts, they had submitted some discrimination claims to the city. Are we investigating those? Because I'm very sympathetic to their cause. And I want to make sure that age and gender is better than what they're reporting. So could we please follow up on that?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams, thank you for that. The Equal Opportunity Director, Don Logan, did send a letter to Ms. Gunderson. And in it, he stated what is happening, which is, first of all, the complaint is under the primary jurisdiction of the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And so it has been given to the federal EEOC for their investigation. But further, because the allegations are against the city contractor, the Equal Employment, the Equal Opportunity Department has also given a contact with our deputy director, Mr. Don Mays, who sees that division, who will follow up with the Ms. Gunderson and other employees as well.
Thank you. I think that's very important we follow through.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Councilman Noakowski, I'm I'm sorry I overstepped. I was just, as I was talking over you, I was asking if Host was on the line other than Nick, representative from Host. So I apologize for stepping over you. I don't believe there's someone on Host besides a representative of Nick Wood. And that's what we're requesting. We're requesting to speak to Host. So is that possible, Charlene?
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, we can request, I don't, looking at the list, they are currently not on the line. But we can request that they be on the line. We'll see if if they respond. But we will also have to have a number to identify a Host representative. So can definitely reach out to to them.
So are we going to reach out right now? Or are we, is there a minute to wait or?
I guess from my perspective, Mr. Wood has been able to answer questions on behalf of Host.
You're absolutely correct, Mayor. But I had made a request to one of their other representatives to make sure that they were on the line to be able to answer some of the questions.
I I think we would depend on Mr. Wood to identify his client and get his client on the line. That would have to be Mr. Wood's task.
Okay.
Could we? Yeah, could we unmute Mr. Wood?
Yes, I am texting my clients as as we speak, Mayor.
And Councilwoman Pastor, is there a question that Mr. Wood might be able to answer? We might as well try.
I just, I don't think he can. I I would like to hear it from the the someone from the company. That's HR or whoever. I want to ask, what I want to ask, and I don't want to, is that Vice Mayor Guadalupe just told us about an employee that just passed away or a story that is on social media. And Nick, Mr. Wood stated that that was not true. And I just want to hear it from an HR person on Host. But while we wait.
We also, I think, I I am not familiar with the details of HIPAA, but I am not sure if an important employer can discuss any more detail than we have about medical issues.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, unfortunately, my clients are not available.
So, okay, that's 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 fine. What I like to say publicly to your client, Mr. Wood, is that this request has been placed several times for them to be on the phone from the past meeting. And I would think that they would like to be on the phone for this current meeting because it does speak, there is being an ask for rent relief. And so for me, it would be nice for that they would be on the phone. Secondly, I just want to thank staff for really working and putting the stipulations that I had spoken about in the Subcommittee into writing and presenting to the all the primes. So I just want to thank them and commend them for all the work that they have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to echo what Councilwoman Pastor said. I I just think it's, you know, we had this whole conversation at Subcommittee when when HMS didn't didn't show up. You know, they're the ones that need the rent relief. I find it profoundly disrespectful that we talked about it in the past at Subcommittee. And here we are again, where we're taking this important vote about something that we've been talking about for many, many months. And it's been, and it's not been something that has been easy for staff. So once again, thank you so much for the staff, for all the work that you guys are doing, for for my colleagues, all the work that you guys have been doing on on this as well. Like, it's it's a very difficult conversation, and and I know that it's very important. But I think it's really sad and disrespect disrespectful. And it shows the type of people that this multi-billion dollar company that's not from the United States. It's, we can see now what what they are really like. And it's like so arrogant and disrespectful that we're having this vote and that we have all these questions for them and that they're just not here once again. Like, it's not, it's not even the first time that we've talked about them being present when we're talking about giving them so much money. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I have a last question.
Councilman Noakowski.
I'd like to ask the maker of the motion if they would include the 15-minute breaks just in, just to end the distrust that we have, if there is or if there isn't, right? So I'm not sure if the maker of the motion would do that or not.
Mayor, if we could have the city attorney just speak to that.
Mayor, members of the council, we just, we discussed that requirement of the breaks. I don't remember all the details back when we we did this the first time. And I believe we went as far as we felt we could legally go in requesting that. And so adding to the motion now, I I would advise against adding the motion now because we haven't got a chance to research and reclarify anything or any new basis to do that. So I'm sorry, Council.
So can we have Charlene kind of keep an eye on on that? Because both sides said that they actually permit individuals that get tired or that need a break, that they can actually do that. If you can kind of monitor monetize that and let us know if that's happening or not, that'd be great. So then we can re, we can remind those individuals that those those individuals aren't receiving those breaks.
Councilman Noakowski, again, it would be staff's pleasure to do that. We are in the terminals very frequently, making sure that all employees have on on masks, Plexiglas. And so we are making sure that safety is first within our terminals. We also want to make sure that our employees who work in the terminals are are safe and healthy as well. And we will basically monitor to ensure that they are getting the breaks that they deserve and what we require contractually. So we we will, we will certainly do that.
Thank you, Charlene.
Thank you, Councilman. Roll call.
Okay.
Cecicio.
No.
Garcia.
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
So I think that, you know, this has been a long conversation. I think we failed to look at a hospitality ordinance or more protections for workers. And I think it's our responsibility, especially hearing today for the first time that we've actually had a death in result of not being able to to take care of everyone. I do also feel like we're, the small businesses, particularly the minority-owned businesses, are kind of being held hostage for these multimillion corporations to kind of hide behind. And we've seen one of them not even have the decency to show up today after our colleagues asked them to show up from from before. I do think we're in a difficult situation. I'm going to be voting yes on this because of those small businesses and because I think the airport needs, you know, we need to take care of those folks and and we want those workers to go back. But I do want us to seriously think about other ways in which we can mandate the 15-minute breaks and other ways in which we can mandate taking care of the workers that are making these companies so much money. I'm not willing to shut down the small businesses at this point, and I think they need this. But I want to be very clear that that's the reason why I'm doing this and and voting yes. And I think, hopefully, in the future, as we negotiate how these contracts work, we can release those small businesses from these larger corporations and allow them to flourish and have the right contracts with our with our airport. And so I'm voting yes, but would ask my colleagues to continue and look for ways in which we can support the workers. Thank you.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalupe.
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. So, I mean, once again, I I think I sound a little bit like a broken record at this point, but I'm still very concerned over over this item. Once again, I mean, I keep saying that, first things first, again, HMS Hosts, once again, did not show up today to talk to us about a lot of these concerns that we have. You know, they are very wealthy companies. You know, we've asked them time and time to help us take care of these workers. You know, we are number one in in the country when it comes to COVID. And I don't see how is it that we're going to flatten flatten this curve if workers continue to go to work and and continue to get sick, right? I mean, we've had people, we've we've even had people on the 11th floor get sick because they had someone in in their family that went to work and someone at the job had COVID, but they just did not call in sick because they needed the money. And that is the struggle that people go through, are going through in our working-class families, day in and day out, where they're, where they probably know that they probably, they have the symptoms, and they're going to go to work because they need to feed their families because the state has also failed them. No one can live at $210 a week. So we're we're in this very, very difficult situation. I think, you know, this worker, I mean, this worker, like, really hit home for me, like, Kedisty is someone that came to this country looking for that American dream. And the moment the country was in a difficult situation, she died because she had to feed her family and she had to continue to provide for her family back in Eritrea. So so that's very concerning to me. But I do want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank Councilwoman Pastor for all of the work that she's been doing on this. And I want to thank our chair from from the Subcommittee and TII, Councilwoman Thelda, Thelda for also being incredibly supportive on on all, on everything that we've been doing. So thank you, guys. Thanks, thank you to the two of you so much. And I want to thank staff. I know they've been running around back and forth for the last couple of months trying to get, trying to get to the best that we could, in my opinion. I still think that this is not enough. You know, we've, we've seen so many workers at the airport infected with with COVID, right? I mean, we've seen TSA, you know, is very low on workers right now because workers being infected with COVID. And we're going to continue to see this pandemic go up until we don't hold these big, multi-billion dollar corporations accountable. So at that, I would like to read a quote from the GoFundMe page that that has been created to raise funds for Kedisty's family. Kedisty Teske Devise dedicated her life to taking care of her husband, children, and her love and her loved ones in Eritrea. Not only did she go above and beyond for her family, but also the Eritrean community in Phoenix. Unfortunately, Mama Kedisty has been a victim to this pandemic, and this unexpected loss remains shocking to her loved ones and the entire Phoenix community. Thank you so much for that, Mayor, and I'm going to be voting no.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes six, three.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. We next move to item 47, increased funding for our small business grant program. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank all the council for stepping up at last Tuesday's meeting. I thought we did a great job of coming together and compromising. I know we need to assist people with your utilities and their rent. But it's also important for our small businesses to continue to be out there. Some of these small businesses really depend on these grants to make it through the pandemic. And and so with that, I want to, again, thank everybody for stepping up and compromising. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yeah, if if the Vice Mayor doesn't mind, I make the motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay, thank you.
Well said, Councilwoman Stark, and and thank you for your passion for amazing District Three businesses and our our whole city. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I wanted to make a friendly amendment.
Yes, I wanted to make a friendly amendment. Is it possible to prioritize the businesses in dire need of assistance immediately?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor. Let me ask Chris Mackey if she can respond to that. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Stark.
I was just, I was adding it.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand how we would, how we would quantitate that, but I agree that the most dire need, they should get it.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, as we looked at the applications that we had received already, we had prioritized them in the order in which they came. Staff would need to look at what mechanism we would use to prioritize those that were in dire need. But of course, we'd be happy to look at that at council's direction and work from that without a problem.
So Chris, are you saying you have a matrix or are you asking for directives on what we consider dire need?
Yeah, what criteria would you propose, Chris?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, we could look at, so right now they're in, the matrix that they're in is in the order in which they were received. We had the Arizona Community Foundation go back and actually look at the times that they all came in. So we made sure we followed that methodology. Off the top of my head, as we look at those that would be in dire need, we absolutely could make calls to those businesses and talk them through. We know those businesses that are still, they're open, they're, the businesses that are still continuing to see patrons coming into them. We could look at that and actually call our businesses and ask them questions that would lead us to the conclusion of those that were struggling. We know a number of those businesses that are truly struggling and without the grant funding, look at closing here in the very near future. So I would suggest that my team makes calls to these businesses and is able to analyze that information based on personal contacting calls with those businesses.
Well, what I would like to see is a matrix. So I don't, I'm assuming that there is, you have received some financials to know. The way I, how you explained it, you received it in order, but that's not a matrix. That's his first come, first served. So I would like to see something. I don't know what that looks like, but I know there are more smaller businesses that are more in more need than they are than others. So I can help with that, but that's, that's what I would like to see.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, we'll be happy to do that. We can look at the information that was on the applications on those, on the ones that have received. We have close to 700 applications that are pending. And we thought we could fund 200 to 220 of those applications with this very generous addition that council is considering today. We could look at those applications, look at the financial information they provided, look at their, one of the questions that is asked is, you know, how many months of, how many months of funding do you have that remain available? We can definitely create a matrix on all of that.
That specifically is one that I'm looking at. The latter that you just said.
Wonderful. We'll be happy to do that.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Councilwoman Williams.
I just want to be assured, like, you know, Chris is quite capable of doing that, but it doesn't slow down the money when you get this out in a very timely fashion. Can you do that in an expedited manner, Chris?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, I will pull my entire team that is teleworking and working on other projects now to be able to do that. It will take us a little bit of time to be able to, to go through each of those applications and to create the matrix that's being discussed here. We had had things ready to be able to send out tomorrow. And it'll take us just a little bit more with the holiday week next week. It may take us just a little bit more time to make sure that what we follow is accurate. But we will absolutely move as quickly as we possibly can and we will not delay it. We will put all hands on deck to get this done quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just to be clear, though, it will delay it past what the current idea was.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, clarification, as City Manager just asked me, it will delay it past what was our anticipation of sending them out tomorrow.
But.
Mayor. Yes, Councilwoman Pastor.
But it won't, what I want to make sure is that it won't delay it from them not receiving it in the sense of by the December 30th or 31st. That won't happen because if you already have the 700. From what I understand is it's, you can, we can identify them by December 30th, 30th.
I think it's important, though, to note that what we're moving from is an objective date, you know, criteria to a subjective criteria that we would be asking Ms. Mackey and her staff to do, which they can do, but we just have to understand that's going to take them time. I don't know that they can get that done by December 30th, going through all 700 and trying to make a qualitative evaluation of those 700 different from just by date. They'll do it as fast as they can, but I don't know that you can get that done by December the 30th, go through all 700 and lay them into a matrix.
I made a mistake. I made a mistake. I forgot this is out of our general plan. I thought it was like we had to meet the deadline. I realized that we don't. So sorry.
That's correct. That's right.
All right. Roll call.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can we just clarify? So is the, is the motion for Chris to do a subjective evaluation with the matrix or is it to do it by date?
I understood that, well, okay, yes, good question.
Timeline. It, I don't know if it's subjective. It's, it's, Chris, what you said at the end, it had to do with the least. Oh gosh, I can't even remember how you said it. It had to do with the financials. The least amount of months to survive, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, one of the questions that's asked in our application is how many months of funding do you have available to support your business? That is one of the questions that's asked in the application, and that's a direct answer that they provide. So that is one of the criteria that we could look at is if we were looking at those that are the most distressed. It would be, we would then be ranking them in the order of those that had no months left and work through until we run out of money.
That's what I'm asking for.
And you can do that very quick, I'm sorry, Mayor. Can you do that fairly quickly, Chris?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, it isn't information that we receive in our, it's information that's provided in the application, but it's not separated in the spreadsheet information that we work and receive. It's done on each of the individual applications. So we'd have to go and pull each of the individual applications to put that information into a spreadsheet and in order.
Mayor, members of, mayor, members of the council, if I may, to add a little bit of clarity to this, you know, as a former auditor, looking, looking at financial statements can be quite difficult and they are very subjective in nature. And so, and again, we're looking at businesses that differ in terms of their complexity and in terms of their ability to put together sound financial statements. We did not require that length of detail. So I would argue that trying to do this is going to be extremely subjective and we definitely, there's no way that Chris could do that in that short amount of time. So I would recommend strongly that we stay with what we've got here. There is additional money more than likely coming in as a way of business assistance in future stimulus bills and we could address, we could set up some sort of scoring and criteria for that process if that happens.
Mayor.
Mayor.
I think I heard Councilman DeCecio first and then we'll go back to Councilwoman Pastor.
Yeah, I'll just be very brief. I would prefer to stay us on date. Everything that Jess said is exactly correct. There's no way you can score and get it to the people who are suffering right now in time. And I, you know, maybe it's something we should have thought of a while back, but we didn't. And right now, we just got to get this money in the hands of the people that need it. Thank you, Mayor. I would be supportive only if we stay by date.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Pastor.
Well, my hoping is that it's not, it's only on order received because it depends on what the business, a business could say order received but have cash on flow for three months. And a, and then the second one or third one or the last one or the one before, after the last one could be, I only have a couple weeks. So I want to get the money into the hands of the most dire need businesses. So how that is worked out, I don't know. I could probably work it out, but everything is subjective anyways.
Councilwoman Pastor, and Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it's Chris Mackey. As we have now been in the pandemic for eight months and our businesses have struggled, as we look at each of these applications, very few of them had much runway left. In the beginning, you know, they would have four months or six months or a month or six weeks. Or as we're moving, as we're moving into these applications being received in October and November and December, most of these businesses on their applications are listing virtually no cash on hand remaining for their businesses. There, I would, I would state that most of them are struggling dramatically and are in dire need now.
So then can we leave dire need in?
Councilwoman Pastor, I guess the challenge with that is, again, dire need is self identifying. I mean, everyone's going to say that they're a little more dire than the next person if their lives depend on it. And again, Chris's department, while they do fabulous work for economic development, they are not forensic accountants. And so their ability to actually get into that level of detail in that short amount of time is non-existent. I'm just going to be quite frank and honest with you. It's not going to happen to that degree of detail. You would require, again, from my perspective, CPAs and forensic accountants to actually be able to get into the detail in the weeds.
I don't think I'm asking for that deep of a detail, but I'll let it go.
Okay. So I will then ask for a roll call vote on Councilwoman Stark's original motion.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Norkowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
We move to item 48, IGA with the Phoenix Union High School District and others for digital divide solutions for underserved areas, noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 48?
Second.
Motion and a second. We do have one member of the public to address us on this item. Mukhtar, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor. And I want to thank the city councilors that spoke about HMSO. I used to work at HMSO and I hope the city council will do something about it. For this agenda 48, I want the city of Phoenix to look at the elementary school level. To, one thing the COVID-19 has done is expand the gap in education with low income students and technology has been very difficult for low income families and families who launch barriers. Any program the city is working on it, I'm hoping that you guys will look at it at elementary school level to close that technology gaps in those low income communities. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your passion on behalf of our students. This grant does include Phoenix Union and the 13 public elementary school feeder, school districts within Phoenix Union. So we'll be building on the work we've already done with elementary schools, which includes delivering protective equipment. We've helped some students get tablets and computers. So I think you will be excited about this one. And we, I should say, Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating in the vote, but has been very active in the design and implementation of the project.
Mayor.
Councilman DeCecio.
I'll be supportive of this, but you've heard this before and I'm going to keep saying it every chance I get. The best thing that can happen right now for the education of these kids is to get them back into the schoolroom. Especially young boys, they're going to get further and further and further behind if they're not in the schoolroom. You've got to ask yourself a question, why the richer districts stay open and why the poorer districts stay closed? You look around the state, not always exactly like that, but it's pretty close to that. So what's happening, the divide in education is going to continue because people aren't brave enough to be able to stand up to the teachers unions and others that are pushing for these closures. And until that happens, these kids are going to keep falling further and further behind. They're going to blame everybody else but themselves. But at the end of the day, it will have been their fault for keeping their schools shut. It's unacceptable what's happening right now in our school system. Unacceptable. It's the wrong thing to do and it puts our kids in danger in the future because it puts them so far behind everybody else. That gap will increase and will be from everybody and those individuals that are supporting these shutdowns on these schools. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes, and thank you, Councilwoman Pastor, for all the work and making sure this happens. And thank you for staff for helping out.
Norkowski?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
Items 49 and 92 are related items with our partnership with Wildfire. So we, Vice Mayor, could we have a motion on item 49 and 92?
Yes, motion to approve item 49 and 92.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia.
Yes.
Norkowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams? Williams? Guardado?
Yes.
My name is George.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven, one.
Wonderful. We next move to item 52, voluntary acquisition and sale or lease of property for U.S. vets.
Mayor, I would like to make the motion on this if I could.
Please, Councilwoman.
I want to thank staff for working out all the problems and the homeowners association agreeing to accept this in the neighborhood. So I move approval. Thank you.
Second.
And Councilwoman Williams, where is this, which council district will this be?
I know it's probably a difficult guess on which council district, but it is number one.
I thought it was important that we note that. So thank you for your work on this item and making sure our veterans know their value. This, Phase One of this passed unanimously, showing that we come together to make sure our veterans have a quality roof over their heads. We do have one person who knows this value very intimately available to address the council. So we'll open to public comment for Michelle Jamison.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Mayor Gallego, City Council, on behalf of you vets and homeless veterans that we serve, I would like to thank you for your continued support. We work hard every day to serve those who have served us. We work hard every day to serve those who have served us, and we are just very thankful. Thank you.
Well said, thank you for working so hard on behalf of those who have served our country. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I would like to thank Michelle Jamison and the whole board and the U.S. Vets for the work that they provide to our veterans and housing. It's a whole collective that they all work together and also provide workforce training. So I want to thank them. They're, sadly, they're leaving my district because I enjoyed them, but they're going to, number one, Councilwoman Williams' district, and I'm happy that they stayed within the city and that we were able to assist their transition. So thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes, yes.
Stark.
Yes, yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes, yes, yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Merry Christmas.
Wonderful, a unanimous vote for investment in housing in partnership with U.S. Vets for our veterans. We next move to item 55, a three year membership with the Canada Arizona Business Council. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 55.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I am looking forward to supporting this. We have had so many great economic development partnerships through our work with the council. Any comments? Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. I apologize, Waring.
Yes.
Thank you. Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next move to item 56, a foreign trade zone application for Taiwan Semiconductor Manufacturing Company. Do we have a motion?
I think that is a wonderful manufacturing company. I am so excited. District one says move approval.
You're getting everything.
I'll second it.
In Phoenix, in District one, we are very excited to have them, but it does seem, just the pot is, District one is on fire today, that's for sure. Great things for it, city. Looking forward to this amazing investment, our largest ever. Any comments? Roll call.
I have a conflict.
Oh, and noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating in the vote.
Is it cautious jealous?
Never, never, just envious.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
We next move to item 67, amend the Phoenix municipal code for the adoption of the traffic barricade manual and definitions. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item 67 is for ordinance G 6779, and ordinance amending chapter 31 of the Phoenix City Code pertaining to streets and sidewalks, Article 13, right of way management program, section 31-200B, City of Phoenix Traffic Barricade Manual.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 67.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Wonderful, thank you. For our city staff, does that conclude our agendized items for this council meeting?
Yes, Mayor.
Wonderful, could we turn to our city attorney to introduce the final portion of this council meeting? The request to speak from our citizens, if our city attorney could please explain citizen public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on items of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters.
Thank you. We will begin with Elizabeth Venable.
Hello, obviously, if I had heard about 91, I probably would have commented, but I was too focused on the MOU. I wanted to emphasize that Lakeview Grants Pass was a decision that was in 2020. You have to stop criminalizing homelessness underneath it, you have to stop destroying the property of homeless people, and you have to stop driving people out of the city if that is an issue, which I don't believe that is quite as relevant, but that's also part of the ruling. I think it's a joke to say that you're not criminalizing houselessness because you do a great deal of enforcement all over the city with regards to encampments I've seen in different places in the city. And I think just try to zone it away, or put it on to the county, or not acknowledge the real investments you guys should be doing. I think that is your detriment, and it's passing the buck. I think it's great to do the veterans, but that's fewer than the number of people who died on the streets this year in the City of Phoenix, and we don't even know the final number until the end of the year, but it's over 500. So that is a lot of my commentary. And all I would say metaphorically is that the clock of justice is ticking, and it may toll soon. And I wish you all the best, so, okay, but you need to follow these rulings, and that's the end. Of me, I'll give my time.
Thank you. Next to the floor is Alicia McKinley.
Hello. Hello.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? I'm just, and I want to congratulate you for your win, and also, I'm calling about the veterans, I thank you for, you know, an agreeance, an agreeance for them to have their, to get their funding. Also, I'm a little concerned about the houselessness, the people that are still without houses. I know it's a bad time in the pandemic, I know all this stuff is going on, but I still believe that it's still hope for them. And so I just wanted to thank you for your, for your, for the veterans, and again, congratulations on your win. Mayor Gallego, and that'll do it for me for now. Thank you so much, and you guys all stay safe. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. For our staff, do we have anyone else online to address the council?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Then Alicia is our grand finale comment for the entire year of 2020. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you to our city staff for hard work during an unprecedented year. Have a happy holiday season and a wonderful new year. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.